I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the May thirteenth Dexter City Council meeting. And ask that you stand and join me in the singing, in the pledge of allegiance. Bonnie, this is your last meeting with us. You lead us, please. Thank you. George, please call the roll.
Aldag.
Here.
Griffin.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Michelle's.
Present.
Schlaf absent, semi Pharaoh.
And he's excused.
Uh, Kio.
Here.
Bertely absent, Keating.
Here.
Malik absent.
Thank you. Okay, uh, items C is approval of the minutes. We have several sets of minutes for, to be exact, in the packet. We have a city council meeting from April twenty second. A council work session on April twenty ninth, special meeting on April thirtieth to do the city manager review. And our first council budget work session on May seventh. Um, the supplement that the city manager emailed out this afternoon. Had a revised set of draft meeting minutes for the April twenty second. Um. Did everybody see that?
No.
No?
Reading me.
You did not, Zach?
No, I saw it. I haven't had time to review it.
Okay, um, will you be calling it up online then?
Yep.
Okay, um. I just want to note in there, Jamie, you caught the fact that, that the way the voting was backwards. When he corrected the, the motion, it still says motion fails at the bottom. It needs to say motion carries.
Yep.
So whoever makes the motion to approve the minutes, if we would note that, please. Is someone that wants to move the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes, um, the four sets of minutes, including the correction that was in our supplement.
With the motion carries?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Motion by Aldag. For a second? Second by Senator? Okay, any discussion on the minutes? So now you made the motion? Joe?
No.
Other council members? Zach?
Uh, page five of eight.
Page five of eight. Okay.
Leave the original motion to approve the special land use did not include the hot patch that was made as a friendly recommendation, uh, friendly amendment, which was accepted by the makers that should be documented. Um. And I think on page seven of eight, it's probably cleaner if it's, uh, include temporary fire apparatus storage building.
Yeah, yep. Structure or structures in the first one, structured, yep, and the second one. Thank you. Good catch. Hey, other council comments? Okay, please call the vote to approve the minimums, all sets, all four sets.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. We have no prearranged participation, but we're down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on an unauthorized this evening? Um, if you do, if you're representing a group, we'll give you ten minutes. If you're by yourself, we'll give you five. Well.
And to specify too, if the item has a public hearing, they get to speak during that.
Correct. So if you're, if you're here to speak on the, um, Pelham condominiums planned unit development, that's coming up in three agenda items. Are there comments from the citizens on, or are there the citizens that wish to speak on any other topic? Okay, Josh, are there, is there anyone online with a hand up that is here to speak on an unauthorized? Okay, I'm not seeing any either. Okay. All right, we are down to item F. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare on council? Seeing none, we'll go to approval of the agenda. Is there a moment to approve the agenda?
I'm moving approve the agenda.
Motion by Senator. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jamie. Any discussion on the agenda? Zach?
We have some questions on case seven, the award of payment marketing services.
Case seven?
Yep.
So we'll move that to, um, M three then? And I'm assuming those are questions you don't want to ask the city manager. You want to talk.
Yeah, there, there are some big questions.
Okay, fair enough. Move that to M three? Any others? Okay, George, please call the vote to approve the agenda with the one moving case seven off the consent agenda to item M three.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we're down to our public hearing item. And this is a public hearing for the Pelham condominiums planned unit development final site plan. Uh, I'm going to open the public hearing at a certain time. Uh, if you wish to speak on the public hearing, I just ask that you raise your hand, uh, at such time when you're recognized, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, if you would, please. I'll do my best to give you the five minutes or a little beyond. I'll give you, uh, hold my finger up when you're down to a minute left. Just looks like we have a lot of people who want to talk tonight, so. Um. So with that, I will open the public hearing at, um, seven oh six P M. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? Last row on the left here, please. Good evening.
Karen Morrison. I live in Long Island, but I have one question. As a retired teacher, I'm concerned about a bus. One of the statements that was made early in this was they want to have more families living down in this, um, area. Is there enough room in the parking for a bus to get in, pick up children, and get them out into the roundabout? If not, is the bus supposed to stop at curbside with its light flashing and stop all the other arms of the roundabout to get the children on and off at the busiest times of the day? All I want you to do is consider that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, we had another hand on the side. Sally? Good evening.
Kind of how's it going?
Good.
I just wanted to bring up a couple of points maybe that wasn't pretty serious when you were in this. The average age in Dexter is thirty. The average income is a hundred and ten thousand. I wish I had one of your.
We can hear you. I don't know if we can lose the mic.
I will start.
Thanks, Jamie.
The average age in Dexter is thirty eight. The average income is a hundred and ten thousand. Birth rate in the county has gone down. In the state, it's going down. And people are moving up. So as we expand this time, maybe we ought to think of whether it's really necessary. Um, uh, public private, public, affordable housing is not the same as subsidized housing. They want houses that are starter homes for small families just getting started. And an average of a hundred and ten thousand dollars a household. A high-end condo is not going to be the answer to that question. And if these condos pass all of the ordinances and, um, don't need permits, why did they need thirteen variations, variants? This is, this is not like they followed all the rules. And this thing is so close to the road. Where's the lane for the roundabout going to come from? Are you going to take it from A and W and the Legion? Because where's it going to go? This thing is pretty much close to the road, right? You don't have a whole lot of room. Um. One of the things that the, the builders said, well, this is what the business is downtown. Well. I did a little small survey just out of curiosity. And of the businesses I went to, I just asked, have you heard about these condos? Half of them said no. So, uh, all the businesses want it isn't quite accurate. And in fact, a couple of them specifically said they didn't want it. Dexter supported a lot of businesses way before this time. We had grocery stores, furniture stores, bars, doctors, dentists. We had businesses here. And they survived. A lot of the businesses in Dexter are very old businesses. They've been around for a long time. So the, we need more people to vitalize our downtown isn't quite correct either. Because we're really, we did fine before all of this started. And I'm sure we'll do fine if you stop building. Um, well, that's really my point, other than since two thousand inventory as. And, uh, yeah, I think we probably should let, uh, it settle down a little before we keep building, building, building. Let's see if we can, well, we got seventy one condos on Green Street. Let's see if people buy it. Let's see who's lives in. And, and really, at the price of these condos, you're not inviting families into town. What you're inviting is rich retirees. So is that the end game here? Is that what we want Dexter to be in the end? It's just old people that have a lot of money that can afford these condos? And I just see it all. So just, that's my thought.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, we go over to the side of the room, last row? Hello, Candace?
Uh, Canton's Club, thirty-two seventy-two Dover. First of all, this is not. It's just not, never will be. I looked it up. We have. Okay. Okay, we have seventy-seven houses that are for sale. We have thirteen commercial properties that have been empty. And we're just like killing downtown. That Dapco property, that is an eyesore. Let's do something with that and leave our beautiful riverfront property as is. Lindsay Acres Ackers sent everyone a beautiful email with so many reasons not to do this. And I really hope everybody took the time to read it, reread it. We put a lot of thought into this. We started a petition. We have over a thousand signatures. It's a thousand people that don't want this. And I guess my question to council is, is there anything, anything that can be said to change this? Or are you just, your mind's made up? If that's true, um, tell us now. We'll all get up and leave because it's a waste of time. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Candace. Hi. Good evening.
Evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Very good. My name is Ron Dar. I served eighteen years on the Dexter Board of Education. I graduated from Dexter High School in nineteen seventy-four. I know that surprised you. I went from young. But I haven't talked. Okay, uh, over my years on the, on the Dexter Board of Education, it was my opinion that the village, city of Dexter is not a partner with or ally of the Dexter Community Schools. Um. The city of Dexter never considered the best interests of the taxpayers or of the city or the taxpayers of the district when considering, when making decisions, I'm sorry, when making decisions that cost taxpayers money. As a taxpayer in this district, I would like to see a written document produced by this body that clearly lists each and every variance or exemption of local zoning ordinances offered to the Pelham property. Not, I'm not talking who's going to live there, how many is going to live there, what they're going to do. I just want to see a list of every variance offered to the Pelham property. There, we can review and I will get later, future meetings, I will show you, you did not offer the city of, I'm sorry, the school district Dexter, Dexter the same. While the local authority having jurisdiction, A H J, does not approve physical buildings of public schools, the A H J does have jurisdiction oversight and road issues. The term best engineering practice was used by this body when reviewing A H J issues during the recent DHS bond improvements. I believe the year was two thousand sixteen, I think. Yeah, everybody voted overwhelmingly for the improvements. My question for this body is, has best engineering practice been utilized during the design review of this property? I just want to know, did you always consider best engineering practices? For example, where is the storm water retention pot? During review of various site issues related to the recent bond, instead of a similar, similar storm water retention system that they're using at the Pelham property, the A H J, whatever that is, denied the use of the same for the Dexter schools. Costs a lot of money to take stormwater from the two new fields, which brings people to the district. You can talk to the superintendent. People come to the district because of the schools. Not because they got a superior, not because they got a superior, uh, city council, because they come to the school. They look at the two fields, they say, wow, this is great. They got lights on them. People practice their day and night. So my question to you is, is best engineering practices used for the Pelham property specifically related to the storm water retention? Where's the retention pot? I don't see it. Thank you very much. More will follow. I have facts. I have data. I have old emails. Thank you.
Brian, what's your address, please?
South County, Dexter County, Dexter Community Schools District for fifty years. I live in the district. I have lived in the city. I have a rental property in the city. Thank you.
Was there any other hand up on the right side here? Thank you. Welcome.
Uh, good evening. My name is Ted Hubner. I live at three two two nine East Ridge. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for having this public hearing. I think it's great. Get some feedback from the constituents, especially when there seems a bit of controversy surrounding this project. Uh, my wife and I retired to Dexter for several reasons. Among them was the small town feel, the historic downtown district, and the tranquility of Mill Creek. And, uh, we feel that this Helen project as proposed will greatly diminish all of those attributes. Um, in fact, I find it kind of ironic that our bicentennial year, we're celebrating our history and we're counting our historical business area. At the same time, we're talking about putting up two massive modern structures that are completely out of character with anything else on Main Street. And speaking of character, uh, we have a provision that says that, uh, any new project will not diminish the essential character of the surrounding area. And I don't know who defines surrounding area, but when I look across Mill Creek, I see a natural habitat. Uh, that's essentially the nature present. And to put two four-story condominium buildings in there, clear cut the foliage right down to the riverbank, seems to me destroying the central character of the surrounding areas rather than preserving. I've heard the arguments about the advantages of bringing the water supply to the north of Mill Creek. And I understand that could be compelling, save the city a lot of money. But I can't speak for other taxpayers, but speaking for myself, I would gladly accept a tax increase if, if, to pay for the water supply, if it would eliminate or relocate the Helen project to another location. Mill Creek is the treasure of our community and we ought to do everything we can to preserve it. Um. People, very few towns are blessed to have a natural waterway flowing through a, a, a background or forest area and whatnot, right in the heart of their downtown. We have it. And people from all around come to enjoy what we have in Mill Creek. The unique character, it's a quaint little setting, and people come to enjoy that. I think this could be evidenced by the fact that on this petition that's circulating, there are, uh, around two hundred and fifty signatures from people from places like Ann Arbor, Whitmore Lake, Chelsea, Pinky, that are all opposed to this project. And I believe it's because they feel it will change the essential character of our little lovely downtown area. Uh. To me, the most charming part is the rapids down in front of the main street, or, uh, Main Street right there. I love to sit on the riverbank and watch the water boil over the rocks, flow down past the trees and everything. And I, I just think taking out those trees and all that foliage and putting two enormous buildings right on the bank of Mill Creek is going to completely destroy the charm and the character of that little area. Um, I don't know why the rendering isn't up here tonight. Some people can see what we're talking about. I have it on my phone if anybody would like to see it. Uh, basically what it shows is clear cutting all the foliage on the property so that twenty-eight people can have a nice view of Mill Creek, while the rest of us, residents and visitors are left with a view of their living rooms. Um. I'm afraid, well, in a nutshell, let me just say, I fear that the Pelham project will greatly alter the nature of our community and take away a lot of the charm that makes us so unique. Um, I'm afraid if we go ahead with this project, we're going to be just another of so many towns in this country that have a lot of Bigfoot projects to come down, pick up their local landscape and approach other historic areas. I'm not opposed to development per se. I understand the need for more housing. I understand the need for bigger tax break. And if the project were put over by the Jeffords or on Dexter Chelsea Road, I wouldn't have any problem with it, but it doesn't belong on Main Street. Uh, I, anything goes on in the property, I would submit that it ought to be a one or two-story structure scaled to fit the property and enabled to be shielded by a group of trees and natural landscape so we could all continue to enjoy the essential character of our lovely little Mill Creek and our downtown area. I know the council members have to make a lot of difficult decisions and you're trying to do what's best for the community. But, uh, I'd like to point out that there are over fifty, three hundred and fifty or so of your residents that are opposed to this project. It was a bad idea. There's another two hundred and fifty to three hundred people from the local areas and Ann Arbor and such that have also signed a petition because they don't want to see the nature of this area changed because it's a destination for them. Uh, and then finally, as of last count this morning, there are a total of nine hundred and forty-one people that have signed this position petition. They're concerned about the project. They're concerned about the future of this town. And I certainly hope you take careful consideration to all of their concerns and the issues that they are raising. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ted. Yes, sir.
My name is Loring Dow, uh, thirty-two twenty-four East Ridge. Uh, we go by that park every day, practically every day. It's right behind, behind our neighborhood. Uh. We've been in residence here about a year and a half, and one of the major reasons why we came here is because of the charm of that park and that particular area. Uh, we're shocked that this is considered to be expendable. I totally agree with everything that Ted Hubner said. Uh, I also am very concerned about the traffic that it's already a nightmare for traffic during rush hour to go through that area. And, uh, the one thing I'm challenged to go under the bridge as it is during rush hour, now adding more traffic to go through there seems like, uh, just a horrible idea. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Yes, back row, please.
Uh, we're just kidding. And then Dexter Township, Caretch Hills subdivision. Moved in there in nineteen seventy-seven, driving under the railroad, long time. Not keen on the idea of this building going up there, the condos going up there, and I agree with everything. This gentleman hadn't said, except putting anything in there. In the, in the way. And we moved here, there is, there was a sport, a good chef, but a building sitting on that piece of property. So there was a building there at one time for quite a while, and it's too. But it's been gone some time. We stayed a buck, pulled it down. We should try a little bit. But, uh, uh, what I'm also worried about is with this, but what gentleman says, traffic. Uh, having lived there since seventy-seven, I've driven to the bridge a lot, worked and retired now, retired in two thousand and seven. And what I'm concerned about, I don't know if the roundabouts can solve anything there. Uh, what I am concerned about is adding more traffic coming out of that piece of property for something that's already a school right there, that intersection. Um, I consider it to a big roundabout by stopping every now and then slowing the traffic down behind me when I'm heading west out of town to let the Chelsea, uh, Dexter Chelsea Road traffic make a left turn going to the railroad bridge. Uh, it's like my four-month roundabout there. But what I was also concerned about is, is part of this, is the traffic issue. One time I, I noticed it, the school's out and, and at the end of the business day, traffic will back up almost all the way up Main Street, up the hill. So one day I stopped in and asked the, the state, uh, or the sheriff's department and the, and the fire department. I asked people in there. Uh, this is when traffic's backed up at least sometimes and they, uh, you have trouble getting out, they said, well, yeah. I said to the fire department people, I says, well, we turned the sirens on and people get out and they let you out, right? It's just, no. I says, well, and I brought this up at the Washington Road Commission. I says, that's the safety issue. My house is on Fire Carriage Hills. And the fire department can't get out of it at that time of day, and the fire department can't get out because of traffic, even with their sirens going. My house is burned down because the people are blocked, the fire department's blocking by the traffic there. When I asked road commission, they, they came down with the roundabout, I says, put a right turn red light, uh, from Island Lake Road or whatever it's called at that point, onto Dexter Pinky Road. They put the crosswalk in the, the community across the street while they were building that sign and putting in the right turn lane. Oh, it's crosswalk. I've seen, since that crosswalk, and then there, I think, I think twelve people have stopped for cross that crosswalk. You need a right turn lane. That is, we need some of that traffic back in the town. Just this past week, I'm coming up on West under the bridge, got up to back up traffic because of no right turn lane there. And the car behind you slammed in the rear because somebody finally got under the bridge and scooted under there. And they ran right into the person behind you, but I heard a big crunch. I was waiting for that car to run in me. But unfortunately, he has put on the brake pretty much. So I don't know why we can't, if the county, your help, put a right turn lane that's there, get on Dexter Pinky Road.
Sir, that is planned.
That was.
Pardon? That is planned.
Okay, I, I never heard it from them. They, they said they're going to solve it with the roundabout. I says, that's not going to solve it. So anyway, so, um, I'm against the building because it's going to put traffic, more traffic in that area that we don't need. So. So. That was the other roundabout, so. Thank you very much for listening.
Thanks for coming, Bob. Any other hands in the audience today? Yes, sir.
I mean, Richard, we were here since the early seventies, I've been involved with the school system. And a few other things, and. He decided, we live just outside of Dexter, I decided moving to town because. You get more mature, you don't have time to run around, but you can walk everywhere in this town, one of the biggest draws has been to go down the trail and see all that stuff. That's all I have to say because you said the rest of it correctly, you said the rest of it correctly, so if it has to be really looked at, make this. Look, have the same look it has now because it's a big attraction in my opinion, thank you.
And what what's your address, Richard?
Um, four oh seven.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Bob. All right.
Instead of putting any building in there. I know the here on River people will object to this, but. What I would like to see is a is another decorative. Bridge go over there and turn that into an extended park. Uh, so that you could watch. We could call it the Paul Cousins Park.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Renee Quinn, nine eight six zero Fleming Road. And ditto to all these people behind me. I agree with everything they said, but I have to say regarding the traffic. I was coming, driving into town, I made it through underneath the bridge and the sheriff put their sirens on and took a right. Uh, out of their drive and of course there was all this traffic and they're going like this. And imagine. Uh, the roundabout being there, but the sheriff had to drive over the roundabout to get to their destination, so I can't imagine. If there was a real roundabout there. How they're going to maneuver, so if you do put a roundabout, they'll put a statue in the middle of the roundabout, because that's not going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other ones? Anybody that didn't get a chance to talk? I'm going to look behind me, Josh, anybody online, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Not seeing any hands. Okay, I I think that concludes the public hearing. For portion of this item. So we'll close the public hearing officially at seven thirty three. Um, George, I have one, two. Three, four, five. Six, seven. Eight, nine. Okay, all right, fair enough, then we're so we're good. Okay, so uh, item H one. Um, we take action after the public hearing or can't take action, is there someone that would like to make a motion? This evening?
That's the question.
You sure can.
Are we going to be hearing from the applicant tonight?
We can hear it from the applicant? Yep, absolutely.
I don't know if that typically happens.
I'd like to get a motion on the table and then we'll let them come up.
Move that pursuit to section nineteen dot oh five, I'm in consideration of the recommendation of the planning commission. As well as information from the applicant staff, CWA, OHMDFD, and further in consideration comments received during the public hearing. Conducted by the city council on May sixth, twenty twenty four. City council determines the Pelham condominiums, PPFSP twenty four dash zero zero one. PUD or planned unit development final PUD site plan review application received. March first, twenty twenty four. Final site plan dated March first, twenty twenty four. Draft plan unit development agreement received March first, twenty twenty four is in substantial compliance. With the. I'm messing this up, is in substantial compliance with the preliminary PUD revision dated September twenty ninth. Twenty twenty three, which was granted conditional approval. By the city council on November twenty seven, twenty three and second continues to meet the intent of the PUD district and all. Development standards outlined in section nineteen oh three to nineteen oh five. With the zoning ordinance and moves to approve the Pelham condominiums, plan new development, final site plan. Motion approved, subject to the conditions listed on. Page twenty of the packet.
And I believe everything you read is supposed to say. Public hearing conducted by city council on May thirteenth.
I think it's not. Oh, planning commission.
Did they have a public hearing on the phone? Or that that it should say planning commission, man.
No, it should say May thirteenth, I had the wrong date, please.
Excuse me, Michelle?
It should say city council on May thirteenth, it was a typo on my part, I apologize.
No problem. Joe, and you're you're you're. Making um note to the. Three comments listed under there on page.
The the three conditions.
Page four of the right up there. Okay, is is there a second?
Hi, second.
Second by all day? Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Uh, would the applicant? Like to say anything this evening? I I didn't mean to mumble, sorry, would the applicant like to say anything? I was inviting the applicant up, sorry, my apologies. Hello? Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Joshua Bloom here, part of the development team. Uh, thank you all, um, once again for um, the opportunity, um. Just to kind of review. Um, where we've come from, it's been about a year since we started this process. Uh, we started uh with conceptual uh reviews uh back in May of twenty twenty three. Uh, we went through the process with uh planning, with preliminary planning. Received approval, then went to city council for preliminary approval. Uh, we since have continued to work with all consultants, all city consultants. Um, on all requests related to the projects and concerns, many of which have been uh asked or brought up again by citizens tonight. And I think that many of them have been actually addressed during the process. Um, to get here, uh, we recently went back in front of planning. Um, and received unanimous approval at planning. And I just applaud the process that Dexter has, uh, and the professional consultants that you have. Um, help guiding the process as a developer, um. I think that it's a it's a healthy process of back and forth and, you know, there's no project that's going to make everyone happy. Um, but I think that uh, we have attempted to meet many concerns. For example, uh, some folks brought up tonight the issue of traffic and in your Carolina working report. Uh, ever since the preliminary planning, which is also public knowledge and can be easily accessible on your website. Uh, it has been shown that. The residential use of this property will actually produce the least amount of. Traffic addition to this area, so. You know, I'm not sure what petition went out and what facts were in there or not in there. But many of these issues that I've heard tonight have been addressed uh for the past year. The gentleman's concern, rightful concern of Mill Creek has been a very serious issue that everyone has not uh taken lightly. Um, we have developed an appropriate plan and later you will hear from our landscape architect. Uh, who has an entire history and career with the redevelopment of. Uh, and restoration of creeks and rivers in the state of Michigan and works closely with Eagle, the governing agency for Mill Creek. Um, he has a complete restoration plan that has been reviewed by both planning. And city council and will speak to it later to continue to address folks that uh may not be aware of what the current site conditions are. Uh, and what they will be with the project. Um, I'm going to have uh our architect come up and speak briefly about uh some of the materials. Uh, as we did at planning meeting, um. And that Studio Detroit Architects and Copper Smith. And then I'm going to have Jerry Sisnowski come up, he's our landscape architect. To speak to Mill Creek and and those concerns, just I think they're valid and very important to me and uh everyone here. So thank you again and uh have some of our consultants come up, thank you.
Thanks, Josh. If council has questions along the way, just raise your hand, let's let's take them on.
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Adam Coppersmith, I'm with Studio Detroit, we're the uh architecture firm working with the development group on this project. Along with what Josh said, the thank you for the process that we've gone through uh with both signing commission. And the city council and the input, we truly take it to heart in trying to design this building. One of the questions that came up on the most recent review was the exterior materials of this building. Uh, four story building, but we're trying to address those with the materials that you'll see on the project, there are. Two different bricks that will be used, keeping with uh. You know, the color and the history of the city, if you walk through the downtown and the neighborhoods, you'll see existing brick corrupt. There's a, there is a composite. Panel system that will be painted in an iron or a darker color to complement those. And then also uh at the entrance of the buildings, we're providing stone entry, something that will uh. Parking back to the uh. Tunnel or the the bridges and the stone that's there at the old bridges currently, trying to introduce that into the project. Uh, we've. Found ways to minimize impact as far as height on the project from previous comments, um looking at opportunities to. Uh, put parking and underneath buildings and underground, allowing for the building heights to be reduced. But still uh. Complementing the space and the area around it, there were concerns about height due to neighboring communities. We addressed those by again lowering the building height uh due to. Uh, bringing it down and addressing that with existing vegetation distances, making sure that we were in appropriate height for the area. So we've taken into consideration a lot of concerns, um, trying to bring in. Buildings that will fit within the community and uh. Will be in attractive addition.
Why don't you hold that up to the audience and see what you showed us, please?
The bricks that will be on going, stone and brick. Uh, with the pants with them on building all of.
Um, I didn't.
So, full size, I'm going. Uh, I'll all time, I apologize, I believe that it is at fifty eight. Fifty four feet, this we add to the improved areas of the uh community.
Excuse me. Ask your question, but say it so we can all hear it, please.
I'm not sure if I understand.
Well, if you're underground. You've had to know if somebody's coming in or out.
Yeah, this this will be, I mean, this is be similar to many other presidential complexes, there's each parking uh. Each building will have parking seventeen vehicles underneath. And they'll have designated parking spaces for each uh head for each uh owner of the condominium. Those will be assigned to them, they will have. There is an overhead door for entry and exit that they have access built.
Hey, back to council, questions from council?
Yeah. With respect to the architecture, is it going to be face brick or lick and stick?
It is, it is. It it'll be.
Real thickness?
Yes, it will, yes.
And not?
It's not a face brick or like I said, it is a true brick.
Okay.
Yes.
In the materials, it was suggested that the upper floor of this building was intended to be consistent with buildings throughout the city. I did not see that, would you like to have the opportunity to describe which buildings the the top floor is supposed to be consistent with?
I said that this evening or that was something?
It it's in in the packet.
So um, in keeping with, I'm not specific to any building, but uh. An opt, it's the building stepped back on the top floor. Help reduce the scale. So that you didn't have a continuous wall producing. But it makes it feel as though it's a taller building than it is by stepping that into the undulations in the architecture. Uh, it helped to reduce that scale and then um, the. Architecture of the the windows and the placement throughout the top floor for trying to. Give some reference and not not trying to directly mimic or replicate something, but give reference to some of the existing architecture.
Glad you brought that up, because as you look, as I look at the building, there's no lintels above the windows, it's a very nineteen forties, nineteen fifties. University campus building, we got a lot of buildings we have to build because all the GIs are going to split. Was it deliberately done to not include lintels that all of our downtown buildings next door have?
Um, just keeping with the architecture that we had and comments that we received that we had not previously. Uh, received any comment from anyone specific about a upper lintel. Um, we are providing stone sills at each window, um, but there has not been a comment regarding that, we are providing a. Uh, harness at the top of the building for both uh that. Um, providing some relief and some uh stepping in detail there. At at the top.
And uh, one of the modifications was to have nineteen percent penetration, the windows on the second floor instead of twenty percent. Why wasn't it possible to get twenty percent windows on the second floor?
Uh, it was just, you know, trying to work with the layout of the individual units. There are floor plans and, you know. Over location, bedroom locations, kitchen uses, um, if it was overall, we are meeting. Uh, a requirement for penetration on the building, but in that specific instance, we were slightly less.
And will the only spot that's stone that's consistent with the bridge be visible at the entrances?
It is at the entrance.
Which is on the inside of the site, it won't be visible to the public then?
No, the 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 main entry to the front building is a uh. Stone entry that will be visible from the street with a curve.
Um, this building has elevators, correct?
It does.
The heights that we've voted in the modifications here does not appear to include the equipment room on top. Is there going to be equipment room and roof access through a stairway?
It is a uh. A cheap elevator that uh the approximate run will be about two to three feet for the elevator.
So there's nothing sticking up?
No, there's not, there is not an entire um penthouse on our machine on top of the building, it will be approximately two to three foot over and. Over top of the uh. The building roof itself for that, uh which. Will not be visible.
All right, so Michelle bookmarked that, I'm going to have you check to see if it's okay to have that higher than what the modification is. Um, is there going to be stair access to the roof?
Yeah, uh, it is ladder access, yes.
Ladder access, okay. That's all that I have now for architecture.
Okay. Other questions from council for the architect? Thank you, sir, we may call you back up.
Jerry Sisnowski, I'm the landscape architect. Have some slides that may help people understand a little better what we're doing, if we can.
Josh is gonna put them up.
Okay, uh this picture is very important. It's on the other side of Main Street. Um the river onto the park. And the most important thing I want you to look at is the grasses. Uh that is what we're bringing back. Next slide. So uh in Michigan, uh tree-lined rivers weren't the case. They were meandering panels through grasslands. Picture in the middle, this river of Mill Creek in this town, tree-lined um river and sixty percent of the phosphorus loading is caused by the leaves fall off those trees. So third picture of water falling. Anyplace where you observe a river where there's grasslands, water quality is very high. So, and we know this from two sources, one um in the eighteen twenties when they are doing the original land survey, all those notes were in there. Section by section, course section by course. And then the the next thing is the tribal steward state. Native people, that was part of their culture, the rivers, and they've done a very good job of telling that story and on the west side of the state, they're doing a lot of restoration of rivers and doing some amazing things. So what we're going to do is on the shoreline, we're gonna use flowers, orbs, um and deep-rooted grasses and sedges. These are plants that occur along the river benches. And what this will do is not only stabilize the shoreline and improve all the habitat as far as polymer polymers and stuff like that, but it is going to give you kind of a tremendous amount of color through the seasons. During the growing seasons, you're gonna find about three different periods where it goes from white, purple, yellow, orange. And then the winter months, the grasses are have their colors. Next slide. So when we get done with this restoration, this is what the shoreline is gonna look like. Going to be four to grasses, sedges. Next slide. So what we're trying to get away from is our traditional ones. And that machine off to the left is probably the worst invention that's ever happened. Has cut everything. And then, you know, we've become so cultured towards these domestic lawns that how we're doing that it's not too good. When they spray a lawn and you see those little signs that they put there, well, that's because those are nerve agents. So what we, the um approach we took was restoring because creating these landscapes, these domestic landscapes, are creating this uh landscape that nature just can't survive. So this whole project's a study on the right plant in the right place. Understanding and respecting the natural systems. This picture's a you know, white pine, and that grows under certain conditions. So pay attention. These next few slides keep going. They're just uh summer plants that were introduced. The shank of bowling is uh it's a native and it's found along Mill Creek, but it's very rare, not because it shouldn't be there, but all the domestication of landscapes prevented. And we're using this tree uh in the project and uniqueness is it's a river tree. It's actually an evergreen. Next slide. Um Tannrick, that's another river. We're bringing those trees. You can see that it's point big, you know, forty-nine to seventy-five feet tall. That's what we're using. Next slide. Uh here's another plant that we're using in the inside of the area. It's a cullard juniper. You see it like if you travel down uh US twenty-three, looking the sides of roadway directly, you'll see this plant. It's just grown naturally. It's got a reddish, it's made. Next slide. Uh the other thing we're doing with lawns is even when I can add that here or turn more of the sprays, we're using um different types of grasses, buffalo grass um along Main Street because it's hot and dry and it's got it tolerates salt. And back into the site, we're using um it's called microcloth, it's used out east a lot. Uh basically, the conditions of microclimate around these buildings gonna allow us to use this net. We don't have to do the long spanning. Next bit. So on the design, um scales important, people are asking about that, talking about that. We're using trees as they were shrubs. You know, scale to the units and the the natural environment, respecting those microclimates is really important. And then the people's faces, creating patio, rain gardens, that kind of thing, all for, you know, the residents be able to enjoy. I think that's it. It's a wonderful project. They have this opportunity to do what we're talking cuz I've been in the area for thirty-five. I haven't, not in for the last five years have I actually been working in this area. I've been working on and as I, you know, I come and go, and what I saw is the slow and steady decline of the natural systems. That's what I can tell you, but by thirty-five years, Paul, Dan moved in to today. And I'm trying to Again, mentioned about the trees. I know you can't see it, I don't really do a study here very often, you know, but this this is across the road right now. I don't see any trees or anything here, you know, but it they're all, yes, what's out there right now?
Jerry, if you're gonna talk, talk into the mic so everybody can hear the question, okay? Because I mean, the forum is really not to be question and answer.
Okay.
And but I'm allowing it, I'm allowing it to give them the information, but but let us all, let's all hear the answer, please.
Okay, so the the plants that are on that site now are just um they're invasives. Black locusts, poison sumac. Um tree heaven, that's one you fall on around it, you never get rid of it. Um poison ivy. And then we're we're getting rid of that to put natives in.
Are there council, Jerry? There might be council members that want to ask you similar questions.
Hi, I have a question for you. So I guess you're not aware of this. In I don't know if it's upstream, I guess, so Mill Creek Park. So um back in March, we were approached by a Boy Scout troop that was looking to complete a bank stabilization project along the creek. So you sho- you showed a photo of of South saying, here's kind of what we see there. We're trying to replicate that here. We as a council approved planting ninety new trees along that bank. They were a mix of willows and alders. Would you have advised against planting ninety trees? They were planted in April.
Well, you know, there's actually some natural science involved here. And a lot of, you know, people say, well, trees are wonderful and we couldn't get rid of them. Well, the reality is grasses emit more oxygen than trees do by far, you know, a grassy field or a cornfield produces four times the amount of oxygen that the Brazilian rainforest produces, you know, an acre, you compare acre to acre. Uh when it comes to trees, um what happens when you overplant trees is they become monster in themselves. The root systems grow together and they become more than the single tree. They become this massive thing. And the biggest issue in the city of Ann Arbor tried to address it by saying, oh, you, no landscaper can use phosphorus fertilizer because it's getting into our river, but what's really in the river are the leaves and that's sixty percent of that poison. So um yeah, unfortunately, I would advise against it.
What, what, what? Excuse me, hold on, council's asking me questions, Zach?
So you're making the statement that pre-settlement Dexter, there were no trees along the creek?
I wouldn't say no trees, but I'd say very few.
Okay, so that that I'm having some dissonance because when I look at the Michigan Natural Features Index circa eighteen hundred, which is pre-settlement, because we're eighteen twenty-four, it lists the entire floodplain area going back to mud uh the the mill pond that got filled as mixed hardwood swamp, which is kind of what I think of around Higgins Lake area.
Okay.
And that they say that that would include species such as red maple, silver maple, yellow birch, musclewood, hackberry, tulip tree, sycamore, cottonwood, swamp white oak, burro, coon, pin oak, basswood and American.
It's all true, but it's a matter of dancing.
All right, um so my next question is on the landscaping plan, there are a number of trees that the template shows are extending into the building. Is the intent to move it so that they will be clear of the building or to trim the trees so that as it grows into the buildings, it won't interfere?
We're, no tree's gonna be pushed into the building. It's uh it's hard to depict on a landscape plane and um the circles that describe the canopy. And uh those are more for graphic representation than what's really happening in the field. But if you were to measure the center of that circle from building, well, that's where it's going.
So the circles aren't intended to represent the mature drip line of the trees?
Well, they're attempting to, but every, remember I talked about microclimates? Every plant's going to adjust to, you know, how much sunlight it has, how much shade it has. So it's not you know, we put down like a thirty-foot diameter canopy for the drip line, critical root zone. But in the field, that tree is gonna change its shape to where it's growing. So we're gonna put it so it's free of the building, but it's not gonna grow into the building.
All right, um there is a spruce proposed southeast of the building. And it's showing less than at that spot, maybe fifteen or eighteen feet between the building and the pathway. My understanding is that spruce will get significantly larger than that. Is there gonna be any conflicts with the pathways that tree grows?
There. It's a, you know, there's some maintenance involved in all landscapes. And uh what typically, just like you would shear a hedge, if you let it go, it's gonna get huge. If you shear it, it's gonna contain the space. And that's true for trees too.
Yep, and and for reference, I'm the Canton Township Tree Guy. I'm responsible for eight thousand public trees.
Mm-hmm.
So my concern is if this tree is growing in the pathway and it has to be sheared, then it's going to lose its its mitigation factor. It's no longer gonna screen the building like it was supposed to do. Is there a reason why it wasn't possible to do more large trees between the building and the top of the bank? Ride screening from the park and from the road?
Well, sunlight can only penetrate, if you're responsible for trees, you know this fact. Sunlight can only penetrate three thicknesses of foliage.
So it's what I'm hearing is we wanted to put plant sun-hungry plants on the ground, and so we didn't wanna have shade.
You can have bank like we described it, or you can have a bare.
So, and I didn't say in in the slope, I said top bank.
It's all about exposure, spacing.
Yeah, it would, it would still have southern and eastern exposures. Um is there a reason why it wasn't possible to provide more screening trees between the building and Main Street?
There's a ton of utilities. I mean, it's, there's no place to put it. If you've looked at the plans, you see that clearly. No, the utility plans.
Yeah, well, and
There's a water main in there now too.
Yeah, well, and and maybe seven thousand by eight thousand trees are above utilities somehow.
Well, this ordinance, this city's ordinance does not allow that.
All right, um is there landscaping around, I don't see it on the plans here, around the uh waste enclosure?
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't show it on here.
It's that juniper that I showed you in the slide, that's what.
Okay, then then sheet nine of the final PUD site plan is not accurate. Um it shows delivery parking immediately adjacent to it and grass to the side. Um is there screening for the utility box?
Which one?
All of them.
Yeah, there's lots of plants on the site.
All right, I'm done.
Other questions for Jerry? Josh, anyone else from your team? Or do you wanna close?
Sure, I guess so. I see Joe Maynard's on uh the Zoom call. Um if he could unmute Joe briefly, that that would be great. There was a a concern about the general um stormwater management system brought up, and so Joe Maynard is our civil engineer with Washington Engineering. And Joe, if you get unmuted, can you can you speak to the pre-treatment uh structures that are that will be installed to protect the uh stormwater uh quality going into the creek? Thank you.
Sure, am I unmuted now? You can hear me?
Yep, speak up, Joe, if you can, please.
Okay, I might have to sit a little closer, sorry. Um so yeah, so we've worked with um the township engineer um to uh work on a stormwater management system that includes pre-treatment units, um pretty similar to what you find uh throughout the county for stormwater treatment and stormwater storage. We have uh two stormwater storage tanks on site that will store the water and release it into the creek. Um we've worked with the city's engineer to design that system um to meet the best management practices uh for stormwater this close to the creek to work with um you know flooding control and so forth, to ensure that we're not increasing any flood risk to anybody downstream. Um we also have a couple uh, you know, surface detention ponds, rain gardens, you know, infiltration areas um that we've worked very closely with uh Jerry Sisnowski on, creating those landscape micro environments in order to um have those on site. Um I'll also point out um as as a few comments came through, you know, the roundabout is being designed by OHM for the road commission. Um we've been working very closely with OHM and the road commission with meetings and so forth to ensure that our design and their designs for not only the roundabout and the water main are are connected together um so that we get a pretty cohesive project and very little impact to the community as best we can uh during the process so that what we build um doesn't have to be ripped out again and redone uh during the road commissions project.
Joe, there was a question that asked earlier in the public hearing about the ability of a, the possible ability of a bus to come into the site and go around the parking lot and turn out. I know you.
Sure.
Can you clarify or can you just touch on that question that was asked?
Yeah, so, um, you know, a, a, a normal school bus, um, is slightly less than the size of a fire truck. Um, the site is designed to be able to allow a fire truck to come into the site, go around our center island and then exit safely. Um, so we would expect a school bus to be able to travel that same pattern. Um, if you desire, we can certainly add a school bus pattern onto the site. We, we don't know if they're gonna choose that pattern to come into the site and exit. Uh, that's entirely up to the schools, um, but I see no reason to expect a school bus not to be able to make that pattern.
Thank you for answering that question. Council questions for Joe? You have a question for him or?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
You're all set? Okay, so we have a motion, um, on the table by Sam Farrow, seconded by Aldag. Council discussion or questions? Wa?
Um, I have one question for Michelle and then I have a couple of comments. Um, Michelle, there's been a lot of talk about the number of variances to this project. And, you know, I, I, I've sat on planning for almost four years now and where you are, um, as the staff liaison. Every project we've had that has come in has had lots of different. I don't know if I should even be calling them variances, I guess. So my question to you is.
Conditions.
We've, yeah, so we've heard about the variance of the two feet in height, which I don't love, but I do love that, or I do appreciate the idea that two feet higher on a project that's gonna take up much less of the footprint of the actual piece of land that some other project could come in and do. Um, so that's a variance. Are there any other things that are really what we would call a variance or the rest of these things, conditions?
Thanks, Wa. So when we're talking about a planned unit development, they're not variances. The only body, uh, within the city that can grant a variance is the zoning board of appeals. What is built into the ordinance for a planned unit development is the ability for planning commission to recommend and council to approve, uh, very, um, deviations or waivers. Um, so the height that you ask about is, um, is, looks at it in the context of what they originally proposed and what the, um, what the master plan, uh, prescribes and what the ordinance allows. And a three to five-story building is something that can happen, um, um, when you have a planned unit development project, if it was a straight site plan and they came in with the height as proposed, um, the only way they'd be able to get that is to go to the ZBA for a variance. But in, um, reviewing this project, excuse me, taking into consideration the criteria on which a planned unit development is, um, reviewed and considered, the planning commission and ultimately council felt that the, uh, two feet in height, um, was appropriate for the development.
Okay, can I ask one follow-up question to that, Michelle? Um, can you clarify just for me, I mean, I've heard this a bunch of times, just for everyone here too, to understand, if this were a planned unit development and it were a straight site plan, what would the difference be between the allowed lot coverage and the two different types of proposals?
I'd have to go back to double check, but I don't think the lot coverage changed one way or the other. The lot coverage, if I remember right, wasn't a deviation.
No, 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 I don't mean, I mean in general, like if it were a by right development, they could have a larger lot coverage, correct?
Um, you know what, Ra, I would have to go back to look at that, um.
That was in the, it was in the report that we had the preliminary.
Okay, I mean, that's always been my understanding. We've talked about that in previous meetings. I was only trying to bring it up as, as something that I've had to consider throughout this whole process. Um, and Michelle, if you wanna take some time to look for that while I'm making some other comments, um, that'd be great.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I say all of that to say that I have been on council now for almost four years. I have been in this area my whole life. I grew up in Dexter Township. I wanna park in this, on this property just as much as the next person. I don't own this property. The city doesn't own this property. Um, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn while Dan's not here, but he and I talked at length about trying to figure out how the city could buy this property to make it a park. It's not financially feasible for us to do right now. Um, I mean, that would be my number one. If I had all the control in the world over this, that's what I would like to see. That said, what I'm trying to say with these comments is, in my opinion, I'm gonna take the two feet over a giant piece of lot coverage that could just be sitting there and be, I don't know, like a industrial type looking building overlooking the creek, which as a huge kayaker, I hear all of your concerns. I think that's a great place in town. I love to walk my dog down there all times of day. If I could go back in time and be on council when we annex this property in, I would have had some serious reservations about it because of this type of thing. If this were not annexed into the city, we wouldn't even be talking about this. This would be a township issue between two separate townships. Um, it's a complicated piece of property. Um, I, you know, I, all that is to say, when you sit on this side of the table, sometimes you've gotta make decisions that personally you don't like. And for me, I've gotta weigh the options of this applicant has come in and done everything that they needed to do according to the ordinances on our books. And I will tell you, I also sat for a year, over a year, in meetings about the zoning revision of all of our zoning laws. These applicants have done everything we've asked them to and more. Um, I, I don't know what, you know, there's not much I can do aside from vote no on something I think that we legally can't vote no on and then drag the city into a lawsuit. Um, I've, I've learned a lot from having this, not having, but from spending a lot of my time from, from signing up for this admittedly and for having people vote for me, but I've learned a lot from spending a lot of my time in meetings over the last four years, getting a much better understanding of what's allowed and what's not allowed and what I can, what I can decide on and what I can't really decide on. And this is just another one of those in a long line of difficult decisions I've had to sit here and make that, like I said, don't reflect my personal desires for what may happen. Um, and I, 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 I don't know. I don't know what else to say on that. So I, I hear you, I respect you, and I hope you hear me too.
Wa? I did look up real quick the lot coverage question that you had. This, uh, development comes in at approximately fifty-three percent, uh, maximum lot coverage. Um, for the Village Commercial District is sixty percent. So to answer your question, if this had come in as a straight site plan, they could have had, um, seven percent more lot coverage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Comments? Zach and then Jamie?
I have a lot, so I'll probably.
That's okay.
I do too, but I was just gonna take them in small bits. Um, can I just say, I'm sorry, I have to pee really bad, so I'll be right back.
It was brought up, it was brought up at a past planning commission meeting, it was brought up at a past city council meeting, it was brought up again tonight. Have we actually received an opinion from the city attorney as to whether or not we are legally required to approve this project in its current form?
I'm not sure I'm understanding the reason for the question. Can you help me understand the context?
A council member at this table on multiple occasions has made the statement, we are required by law to approve this project as the city attorney provided that opinion.
So if I can peel this onion in a little bit, if a project meets the requirements of the ordinance, even those that are subjective, then yes, we are required to approve it. If we don't, as Ms. Hubbard said, we risk, um, legal action. But to the, your point, did I ask that, has the city attorney been asked to provide a written, um, opinion? No, not to my knowledge.
So to follow up on that, the planned unit development regulations from our ordinance states with some excerpts here. It's provided as a design and planning option intended to, among other things, preserve significant natural features in open space, encourage aesthetically pleasing development, ensure compatibility of a proposed PUD with adjacent uses of land, and to promote the use of land in a socially and environmentally desirable manner, and to minimize adverse traffic impacts. Further down on that same page, it says that the PUD must provide at least three of the following site design elements that could not be obtained, attained through a project design under conventional zoning. We heard a little bit about lot coverage allowed under a by right zoning development. Could you enlighten us as to what other uses or types of projects might be allowed under by right or conventional zoning? I was not able to pull up the use table for Village Commercial.
Hold on just a moment, please. In a village commercial district, um, buildings over ten thousands, for all uses, ten, buildings over ten thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet in gross floor area, um, are a special land use. All buildings over twenty thousand square feet in gross floor area are a special land use. Um, single-family attached is a special land use, multiple family is a special land use. Understand where you're, I'm answering the question regarding a by a by right. Um, um, upper story residential is permitted, bed and breakfast is permitted, accessory short-term rental housing is, um, administrative. Uh, vacation rentals are special use, live works are permitted, places of worship, uh, private clubs, fraternity lodges, et cetera. Um, vocational, technical, those are all special uses, museums, libraries, community centers and essential services are permitted uses. Um, there's a number of office retail service, um, that are permitted, uh, business professional offices, banks and other institutions, retail, certain food establishments up to two thousand square feet are permitted. So are personal service establishments and restaurants that don't serve alcohol. Um, kennels, small animal clinics, uh, food sales, um, in other words, grocery stores over two thousand square feet and service or retail establishments that have a, an office with a workshop are special uses as are bars and taverns, restaurants with carry-up service and restaurants with open fronts. Um, and then we have a few more that are special, that would be things like a micro brewery, small distiller or winemaker. Um, uh, of course, then, uh, accessory to that, uh, would be a tasting room, that's, um, accessory or administrative. Um, outdoor display is a special use, commercial outdoor recreation is a special use. Uh, theaters or cinemas, performing or visual arts studios and photographic, um, printing reproduction establishments are permitted. Um, and then accessory uses are accessory. Well, um, I hope that answers your question.
Yep, thank you. So, I mean, we've heard numerous comments as to the extent to which this development is consistent with the character of the town or, you know, general vicinity. Throughout our master plan, the word character is found in no fewer than thirty-seven times. And the phrase small town is found at least thirteen times, often modifying character or feel. Um, I appreciate what the residents are saying when they said that they don't feel that this large format building, pair of large format buildings doesn't match the character. It, a rebuttal to that comment was made at a different meeting saying, well, the character is defined by the zoning ordinance. Well, what does Village Commercial say? The intent of the Village Commercial District is to promote the orderly development, redevelopment and continued maintenance of Dexter's commercial areas in and around the historic downtown and village. This district is also intended to serve the comparison, convenience and service needs of the Dexter area. So complement the central business district with less intense office, service and retail uses. So if you could make out what Michelle was saying, there were a number of permitted uses that would have met the intent of the Village Commercial, Commercial District that could have been approved under conventional zoning. So then my follow-up to that question, you know, the reason somebody does a planned unit development is because they wanna do something that's outside of the zoning ordinance and affords them some benefits. Our zoning ordinance says that a planned unit development must provide at least three of the following sites of, site design elements that could not be obtained under conventional zoning. So my question to you, Michelle, you said restaurant wa- was a by right use, right?
That don't serve alcohol.
Okay.
What did you say, Michelle?
Restaurants that do not ser- serve alcohol are a permitted use.
Okay, thank you for repeating that.
So a restaurant that doesn't serve alcohol could have had up to sixty percent lot coverage. Could that, that could have been a by right use? Would that also achieve the redevelopment of a gray field site?
Uh, potentially. It, it, the, it, you're asking a a, a question that without seeing plans, um, let me put it this way, um, a restaurant. I, I should step back. When we're talking about sixty percent lot coverage, um, that includes not just a building, but when you're talking about a commercial or an industrial, um, or multiple family type new development project, um, sidewalks, parking areas, um, also, um, are part of the calculation for lot coverage. Unlike single-family residential, a single home, um, sidewalks, driveways are not part of that, um, um, calculation.
Could a three-story pelham have achieved the redevelopment of a gray field site? Could a three-story mixed-use pelham, main floor retail, second and third-story residential, by right? Could that have achieved the redevelopment of a gray field site?
In theory, potentially, it would depend on how it's proposed.
Could that also have had extensive landscaping beyond the site plan requirements?
We always hope for extensive landscaping beyond the zoning requirements. In a by right plan, you don't get that. I, let me put it this way, in the ten years that I've been here, I have not seen a by right site plan come in with extensive landscaping beyond the, uh, ordinance requirements. Um, most of what happens is the plan comes in and there are waivers requested.
So our zoning ordinance says elements that could not be obtained. I submit that a conventionally zoned property, live-work, mixed-use, three-story, even a three-story purely residential building, I guess that would be by right, could have been a redevelopment of the gray field site. They could have had extensive landscaping. They could have offered up the, what, six hundred thousand dollars to extend the water main? They could have used sustainable site design features. So there's either a problem with how our zoning ordinance is written, which we seem open to changing our ordinance when it is helpful to the majority and not when it's not, um. These are not clearly differentiating benefits that make it obvious when you're actually getting a benefit from a PUD. And when you can't make a clear distinction, how can you make a decision based on that? Uh, and I think, you know, the same could be said for the water main. They need, this development needs the water. Could a three-story pelham not, would a three-story pelham not need the water? Like at what point does the pelham need that water? Could a three story Pelham not, would a three story Pelham not need the water? Like, at what point does the Pelham need that water?
The best way that I can explain that is what I did from the very beginning. Um, acknowledging that, yes, this development requires the extension of the water main. They need it for providing water and for suppression. But the um additional benefit to the city is one, we haven't had to go to the cost. Um, uh, to extend water um in this uh, uh, within the, the city. And by extending the water main all the way to East Ridge, it provide, I'm excuse me. It provides redundancy for the water system in West Ridge and, and we viewed that as a benefit. I, I, I recognize that you may not agree with staff or our consultants. And I understand that.
So I wish Megan Mercy here, our consultant from CWA, is she not online?
No, she's not online.
So in her report in the packet. She writes the following goals and objectives.
What Patreon, please?
Uh, page thirty two.
Thank you.
The following goals and objectives from the twenty nineteen City of Dexter Master Plan are relevant to this proposal. And so I guess my question to her is, does she actually think this proposal meets them or that they're just related? Uh, because she cites preserve the small town character of the city. Okay, what I'm hearing loud and clear. From residents is that they do not perceive that this preserves the small town character of the city. So it's not clear to me why that is included here as a goal. I think the project is. I don't know, just complete opposite of that. Um, or the objective five, allow residential density levels that correspond to available infrastructure. Well, by definition. The project does not have a residential density level that corresponds to available infrastructure because they have to loop the water main to make that happen. Um. She mentions protecting and maintaining the city's natural resources, particularly the Huron River and Mill Creek areas. We're hearing from people, they don't think it does that. Um, she states recreation, open space goal. I'm not sure why that's in her report here. Plan for and invest in recreation and open space, new parks and our recreation assets when opportunities arise. That's what people are asking for here. I understand why we can't do that, but I don't know why that's included in her report as a relevant goal unless she's saying. These are all generally, generally related, even if you're not meeting them and doing the opposite. Um, and that, you know, the downtown mixed use goal, the existing character of the downtown area as an aesthetically memorable place. I mean, where else in the Village Commercial do you have a four story completely residential? Large format building, completely residential, Jeffords is even mixed use. And I understand there might be problems getting that filled in. I mean, I understand there's likely to be development here. I object to it being four stories. I object to it being one hundred percent residential. I have serious concerns about. How council, the majority of council decides when it wants to follow the ordinance, when it doesn't. Um. What actually qualifies as a PUD? I think we need to firm up that wording. I mean, it is not clear. It, it's not something you can interpret consistently, and that's a problem. I appreciate, you know, you don't want trees on the bank. We just planted ninety trees upstream. So does the majority of council feel strongly, we don't want, we do, or we don't want trees because we just planted ninety of them? And so we felt strongly, we wanted trees and a stable bank. Why couldn't you do that here? If the residents are saying, we want to block the view a little bit. Okay. We just planted ninety trees upstream. Um. I mean, I think more importantly. The residents. I mean, they know what I think and why I'm not gonna vote against this. I think if you are voting for this. I appreciated last comments, just make it very clear why you're supporting this. And I guess I just want to close, um, unless something else comes to my mind. I came across an article. Lovin Contracting, L O V E N, Lovin, maybe Lovin Contracting. Why are McDonald's arches turquoise in Sedona, Arizona? If you're traveling through West Sedona along State Route ninety eight A for the first time, the locals will forgive you for doing a double take. In fact, they expect it. Visitors from across the world come to Sedona, Arizona every year to experience and explore mountains, mazes and valleys that are unlike anything else in the world. The visitors are happy to leave the road and head off on foot to view some of Arizona's most spectacular sights of close. One of Red Rock's country's most unusual sites isn't far off the beaten path at all and can be found in a safe place shopping center. You might think you're gonna see the golden arches, but no, if you're in West Sedona. You are treated to the site of the only turquoise arches found on a McDonald's restaurant anywhere in the world. The author writes, when your city is home to the type of breathtaking natural beauty you find in Sedona, you take preserving that beauty seriously. When, when McDonald's representatives approached the city, McDonald's, a two hundred billion dollar company approached the city of Sedona about opening a location in the shopping center. They engaged in discussions with Sedona City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. The plans were designed to ensure consistency with the pueblo revival style of the shopping center without taking away from surrounding areas' natural beauty. Maybe you feel like they've achieved that by some of their building materials. I submit that we need something different in our zoning ordinance that is going to present these large format. Exceptions, beauties. Yeah. Something needs to change. If you feel like this is consistent with our guiding documents, what we're hearing from the public is our guiding documents aren't what they want. So we need to have some public engagement to make that happen.
Zach?
All right, so uh Steph or, or anyone who knows better, please correct me if I'm wrong on this. So. Planned unit development, as touched on. At the core of it is to provide recognizable and material benefit to the ultimate users. And to the community where such benefit would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without the planned unit development. Planned unit developments like special land uses are discretionary approvals. That means at least four members of the deciding body has to be convinced by the advocate that the criteria are met. It's discretionary. We, we have the opportunity to say, yes, we, we believe it meets or no, it doesn't. I am not convinced for a number of reasons. Um, I will touch on them. I do have a number of questions. And I would recommend that this be postponed because there are a number of items that are not touched in the current conditions, which are lengthy. Um. So I believe that's Mr. Root on, on the line there. Um, so my understanding is this building would have to be sprinkled because it has dwelling units on top of dwelling units. And fire code says if you're going to sprinkle a building, you must provide a loop. A loop. Water main would be required for this building. If it was a two story building with dwelling over dwelling, a three story building, building over building. So it's something that would have had to have been done. Uh, with respect to the extensive landscaping, there is, when you look at the, the schedule, there is a lot of shrubs and bushes on there. Where I'm not convinced is the landscaping, the significant portion of it is internal to the site. Where it will be enjoyed by the users of the site, but not the community in general. The landscaping where it counts, where it screens the building and reduces the impact of this building is. They have requested modification, put less, not more there, less. Um. Let's see, um. The, this building does not have a green roof. Um, is that correct? Someone?
Correct.
Okay, and Washtenaw County Water Resources Commissioner. Their standards require onsite infiltration with rain gardens. Is my understanding the current standards that they adopted a couple of years ago. So I can't check the box that putting rain gardens is substantially, is a recognizable substantial benefit. Because the Water Resources Commissioner says, we want you to infiltrate onsite using things such as rain gardens. Um, I also believe that as proposed as it exists, that it will change the essential character of the surrounding area. Now, I do believe it's very handsome buildings. I can feel the time and attention that has gone into it. And I would love to have this building in the parking lot in front of Dexter Crossing. I think that's okay. There's not established architecture there. When I think of essential character, there, there are a couple of buildings that stand out that are very jarring and may be very different. Uh, one, the Pompidou Center in France, uh, if anyone's been there or studied architecture school. Right? It's very jarring, but the scale of the building, the height, the size of it is consistent with the established block. Uh, another I got to see myself not that long ago is the Reed Feld Schroeder House in Utrecht. It is a de stiel house along a row of very traditional Dutch buildings. But it matches the line, the size of the building matches, even though it's completely different color and, and all these other things, it. It fits, it feels, yes, I can understand how it's playing with his neighbors. This building or buildings. Um. Their alignment is not consistent with anything else in town. All of our main street buildings are at ninety degrees from Main Street. It doesn't align with the river in a way that makes sense. I, I do know there are ways to make buildings along rivers feel appropriate and have character. As I mentioned, I was in the Netherlands, they have built, they have row of buildings a half mile long that has so much character you're gonna throw up in the canal. Um, I don't see that here. The, the panel uh material, I can't think of any other buildings in downtown that have it. The base material, and I do understand that the intent is to break up the scale of the building. Really stands out is different from any other material in town. Um, as for some of the specific items. Um, that I see are short. It appears in the plans that the maneuvering lanes within the building for the parking is less than what section five point oh, eight, five point zero eight C. Of our zoning ordinance requires, they're twenty two feet and, or they're twenty feet in change. Our zoning ordinance requires twenty two feet. Um, either that needs to get wider. I understand the buildings were, were shortened, um. Or a modification has to be made. It would be very challenging to approve a modification for spots that are that narrow with the ninety degree turn. So that needs to be addressed. The dumpster, I do have a couple of concerns on that. As I mentioned later, our zoning ordinance requires evergreen screening around the. The, the enclosure. This does not have it, at least not according to the plans that we have. Also, when you look at the turning template for the dumpster truck. It requires a very sharp driver who has to come in at an angle for the, the leftmost one. If they're not paying attention, they are gonna run completely over that curb and destroy the landscaping. So I do not believe that the dumpster as configured will work long term. It will cause significant damage to the site. Uh, also one thing that I would throw out to this applicant and to many others, this is for residential use. There are no man doors for this dumpster enclosure. So you got your little bag of trash. You're gonna have to swing open the great big doors. And I'll tell you what happens is those doors don't get swung back. It may for the first year or two, but it's gonna stay open and then we're gonna have to look at the big green dumpster and it's gonna get mushed up. Um, I do have uh questions if someone wants to answer this. Section nineteen point oh three C seven of our zoning ordinance says that. Plan unit developments must have significant areas devoted to open space. When I look at, and open space cannot include required setbacks. Required yard setbacks, stormwater improvements that are manmade, so the, the rainwater pond can't count. Or parking unless the parking is necessary to access the open space, such you gotta park and you put a couple of spaces there. Can someone tell me what percentage of the site is open space? And if it meets all those criteria?
Michelle, are you about to handle that? Have a second question?
I will do my best to answer it. I would need to go back to the preliminary um reviews to refresh my memory. Um, because that's when planning and city council um determined the proposal. Met the criteria of the ordinance. Uh, so hold on one moment, please.
Okay, so when I, my augurs look at this, I do not see significant areas devoted open space. I see some areas, but I don't see significant.
Um. Your, your point, um. Significant is going to be a subjective term and considering that this is a small site. Significant for this size of a site is going to be different. Uh, compared to a residential development, say Dexter Crossing, West Ridge, et cetera. Where the term open space is more associated with large expanses. Of area that hasn't been developed. I think within a, within the context of the urban setting in the downtown. The um, the areas that uh they go on their site plan would, would meet it. And planning commission and council agreed with that.
Well, and, and so this site is sixty seven thousand square feet, give or take. The minimum lot size is nine thousand square feet for the Village Commercial zoning district. So it's not the smallest site possible, sixty, it's seven times. What the minimum is. And if some, if someone from the audience asks me, what's the open space? I could not point to what we're considering the open space. And I know significant is a very fuzzy term and it's gonna mean something different for all four people here, but. As I look at it, the only thing that could qualify to my eyes is the little island in the parking lot. Because everything else is either manmade water feature or within the required setbacks. Um. Section nineteen point oh four C four for plan unit developments. Requires that it show where a bus stop would be located and where mailbox clusters are. I did not see either on here and perhaps I, again, I have a little more extra questions because I didn't arrive back in the country until Saturday night. And haven't done my deep review that I normally do. Uh, it does show where deliveries are going, but it doesn't show mailbox cluster where that's gonna happen or the bus stop. And so I question, either it has to be a modification that we're not requiring it, or the applicant has to add that to the site plan.
So we usually do that during zoning uh compliance for um. Before they go get their building permit, because at that point they have construction drawings. And we coordinate the mailboxes with the post office. And as far as the bus stop goes, it would be internal, um, not external. Because the bus will pull in and as Mr. Maynard has explained, the turning radius. Is based on a fire truck and a school bus has less space than the, uh, less size. Than um a fire truck. Um, but again, that would be coordinating with the schools.
All right, and, and I appreciate that exclamation that it, it happens after our process, but our ordinance says it has to have those things. And I'm not comfortable voting for something that doesn't have something showing on the site plan that says it has to be in there. Um, or notation that this will happen or where it's gonna go, because if there are exterior mailboxes, that's gonna affect the landscaping that we've approved. And if they've said we have extensive landscaping and they have to take out twenty shrubs to accommodate it, then that may affect the balance of, of how it gets approved. Um. Let's see, my understanding, uh, so section nineteen point oh five G two says that. The application for a planning unit development must have all information, must have all information required for a final site plan. Um, the, the school block, school bus and mailboxes listed amongst those and detailed construction and engineering plans. And based on the comments from the engineer, it doesn't appear that we have those. Do we have those or were they not distributed or is that to come after us?
The, the detailed engineering that's required for final has been provided to cut the. O H M, the, and, excuse me, engineering consultant has identified, um, um. The areas that need to have additional information, um, but they were comfortable, um. That they could be rec, uh, conditions of approval as are listed within the staff report in your packet. And construction drawings are basically the layout plans. Um, we don't get construction drawings until zoning compliance.
So. That's another problem in our ordinance because it says the application must have all information required for final site plans. And detailed construction and engineering plans. And it sounds like we don't have those, even though the engineer is comfortable. Um.
So for construction plans, if we're talking building construction? Or are you talking construction plans? And I apologize, maybe I misunderstood. Um, when you said construction plans, I think of building, um. Uh, construction plans as far as um, the site improvements, utilities, et cetera. The city engineer was comfortable with the information provided, subject to the minor um elements. That could be um, conditions of approval.
Well, and section, it's since nineteen oh five G, I've, my search isn't working here, but. The language, as I recall, it doesn't say that the engineer has to be comfortable, but the application must include detailed construction and engineering. The language, as I recall, it doesn't say that the engineer has to be comfortable, but the application must include detailed construction and engineering plans. I also raised the question that neither the development agreement nor the site plan before us describes of side materials, we heard. Description here tonight, but that's not documented as part of what we are approving. Um, that really needs to be touched. What can someone tell me if this is a building type one A, one B, or two A?
Are you talking the architect's terms for building?
Yeah, yeah, for fire code questions. Architect? Okay, so I raised the question because if is one of those three types of classifications, which I believe it could be, and it's more than thirty feet high. It has to have an aerial apparatus access parallel to the length of one facade of the building. That aerial access is different from just a typical fire access in that um. It needs to have a minimum width of twenty-six feet. It has to be at least fifteen feet from the building and can't be more than thirty feet from the building. And it's not dimensioned on here, but the access on the along the railroad embankment does not appear to meet all of those criteria. And.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done, go ahead.
No, do we know if um grading easements have been secured from the Michigan Department of Transportation?
We do not know if grading easements have been received um or applied for, but that would certainly be something that when they came in. For their preliminary zoning compliance before building permit, um if there is work shown um. Offsite, they would have to get, would have to get easements. Um, in regards to the question about the twenty-six foot wide apparatus uh access lane. Our ordinance um um does modify that requirement. Um, it can go down to as little as eighteen feet. Um, but that requires coordination with the fire chief, the applicant worked um in coal, in coal. In collaboration and cooperation with the fire chief on that um. Access area between the buildings and the railroad, and the fire chief was satisfied. With what was per uh presented.
Alright, um did to you? So just can you confirm that that I wasn't smoking something from the Netherlands and that uh the maneuvering lane for ninety-degree parking spaces is supposed to be twenty-two feet wide?
I would have to go back and look at that to confirm it.
Alright, um uh process question, are planned unit developments are considered zoning amendments, correct?
The approval of the site plan um authorizes the uses of the land. The approval of the planned unit development agreement um amends the zoning.
Alright, and and the recommendation is for us to put conditions on that approval. On the proof before us. I'd say a couple last moments here for the development agreement. It ought to include language about when the landscaping and other improvements are installed, so that, for example, when building one is installed that. All the landscaping around that is completed, as it's laid out now. It could wait till the second building is completely done. Um, it ought to also have language at the bottom that. Uh judgment, I forget exactly how to phrase it, but judgment would not be. Of the enforcement would not be based on who drafted or not, so the way it's currently written is that we wrote this document. And if there's a dispute on the terms of it or what it means and it goes to court. The presumption is the folks that who who wrote it knew what they're doing, and so they don't get the benefit of the doubt. If you have the language that it's kind of neutral and we're all equal here, then that makes it a bit easier um for us to administer.
Did you have any more, Gary?
I guess two. Clarifying question to Zach and I guess Michelle. You asked if a P U D was a zoning amendment?
He did.
And you said yes. A P U D approval is a zoning amendment, amendment to our zoning ordinance?
Approval of the site plan authorizes the uses, approval of the development agreement, um um. Amends the ordinance, um it becomes effective once the P U D agreement is signed.
I'm sorry, can I jump in there and ask a clarifying question, because Jamie, I had the same question as you, and I don't think that didn't, that didn't answer it for me. Uh, I'm sorry, um, you said before it amends the zoning map, not the zoning ordinance. So for me, and I'm not trying, I'm not coming at, this isn't me trying to argue with you, but you said a P U D earlier was outside of the zoning ordinance. My understanding, and I'm saying this just as to try to give everybody. The understanding of the law is that. A P U D is not outside of the zoning ordinance, it is part of the zoning ordinance. It is something that can be exercised within the zoning ordinance, and if it is approved, it does not amend the zoning ordinance, it amends the zoning map. Which is also part of the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
Little nerdy detail, is there a couple different ways you can do planning and developments, one is.
Okay, but what, I'm sorry, can I just before you go into that details, when I said accurate?
Generally, yes, yeah, so it in our case. There are two approaches generally in Michigan for how planet unit developments work, one is it's more similar to a special land use where it's just an approval. And there's this thing kind of sitting there. The other that we've used is we essentially, it, we changed the zoning map to say planned unit development. And that's important because there are some weird language in the zoning enabling act related to when you change your zoning ordinance, which includes the zoning map. Um, is part of it. So I just wanted to confirm my understanding.
Still four is yours, Jamie.
Yes, and I guess I meant by outside the zoning ordinance, I meant like. I appreciate your clarification, I meant they're trying to not do the buy right, they're trying to go outside of the buy right uses. Uh, kind of on Zach's point in terms of, you know, more carefully reading P U D where it says shall, et cetera. So for example, it talks about open space, the amount of open space, including the area and percentage of the site shall be specified on the site plan. So it sounds like that's not specified on the site plan, but the P U D requirements say it shall be. And then also to this point about landscaping and buffering. Says landscaping shall be preserved and are provided to ensure that the proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one another and from surrounding public and private property. So I guess my question is, people who are okay with landscaping as is. I mean, you don't, it's unfortunate, we don't have a picture of this development, is this the first time we've had a development in question, we don't have picture in front of us? I, there is no buffer between the development. Certainly not a privacy one.
Um, well, it says appropriate buffer, doesn't it say?
It says adequately.
Okay.
So you might, I mean, I guess, I just want to make the point clear that like, you're proving this, you're saying you agree with that.
Okay, other council owners, wow?
Yeah, just a couple of follow-up things. First of all, we have seen a picture of this, right?
It's in the packet.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, it's just not on the screen, I mean, do we need to get one pulled up, we have one.
Nice for members of the audience, it'd be nice for people on.
Yeah, no, yeah, oh, well, that's what I meant.
Page twenty-one.
I don't.
Page twenty-one of the site plan package.
Yeah, so anyone on Zoom can pull that up on.
I mean, I'm assuming you want to see the rendering, is that what you want?
I I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't think this is.
Well, there's a lot of pictures here.
Okay, yeah, just a general rendering of like the the highest level rendering we can get, right?
And then at the bottom, it showed like how how tall is West Ridge, how tall is the library?
Okay.
There's like one very comprehensive.
Okay, regardless of that, regardless of that, I just wanted to address that and just, a- anyway, so. A couple of things, Zach, I, as I've said in the past, I appreciate a lot of what you bring up. Um, I think it's, there's a lot of good food for thought there. Um, I wouldn't mind postponing this to address some of the issues that you brought forward, however, there's some of the other issues where. I'm gonna sit here and I'm not accusing you of anything, but this is just the phrase I'm using for myself. I, there are some, I I don't wanna be an armchair expert up here, the D A F D, the fire chief, the. They've all signed off on things like the turning radius by the dumpster, I mean, there are things that I think. We need to just let go, but there are other things that I think. Could, you know, be worth a second look, because we do have people here who have issues. With this development, and if we can do anything to make it better, we should do that. The other thing, though, is, you know, we talked a lot about what could go here, and you know, we've seen other. Proposals like the brewery, which was also a planned unit development, it was not a buy right use because it was gonna sell alcohol. I I would love to sit here, like I said before, all day and, you know, debate what would be the best use for this, but. We're at the mercy of the market and the private owner of this property, I mean, none of those other things have come before us, we can't make them come before us. And if we did, I would think that would be kind of suspect on our part, to be honest. And. While I, I, Jamie, I completely agree that mixed use may fit better. For me, my thought process with that is I had to weigh the mixed use that was approved years ago that sits there vacant. And is not an asset to the city, and I don't wanna take that risk again. Um, so you know, I mean, that's maybe a personal. I guess that is my personal opinion, my personal choice that I can have in this situation, but. Um, again, there's nobody proposing mixed use to us, so no, actually, I can't have that choice, if someone came with mixed use, I would have a lot of questions because of the past failures of that. And the last thing is, I really struggle with this whole argument about. The small town feel and all of that, I mean, I get, I get it, I get it. I uh grew up with the buck pole, I didn't have a problem with the buck pole. That is a soft, you know, that's that's subjective, what that means, and for me, that makes it really tough, because. That's subjective, but when I look at the objective things, like I said before, that I have to go by. In my opinion, they're meeting a lot of those requirements, and the ones that I have questions about, Zach, is like what I'm saying, you know, what I would like to hear come back about what you have questions about. And and the the last thing I'll say about the small town feel is kind of what I said before, I mean, we annexed this property in. And I think a lot of people didn't know that, to be fair, in the first place, a lot of people didn't know the history about it, didn't know how complicated it was. With the two different townships and the the unexpected loss of that business and all of the things that went into this. But honestly, have we ever really considered that parcel an extension of Main Street? Because realistically, if we thought about what was there before, we had a shooting range. That's not an extension of Main Street. So I, these are just thoughts running through my head that I just wanna share, because as you know, I'm conflicted about this decision, and that's why I wanna make sure that it's. As much my thought process as possible is out there for all of you.
I have a few comments, although a lot of it has been um said around, so um I'll try to keep it brief. Um, first, I I want to address a couple things in terms of. What is sitting at front of us has gone through a lot of hands that um. Put an expert eye on it. So it has passed the planning commission unanimously. It has had various levels of our um staff or D A F D. Chief looking at it, and when it has come to us, it has come to us after all of those. So I agree that. We, I would like to be able to trust our experts. That's why they're there. Um, and I want to. Clarify that, that yes, we can ask questions and we can. Seem to question their abilities, but I trust in their abilities to. To have looked at these and answered some of those questions for us. We all can sit here and say, I wish this was. What it used to be, wish. It could be a. Would a restaurant. Cover some things, would a three story be? Better or, none of us can say what can come in front of us fully, because it is a private property. Um, and the developer and the owner are putting something in front of us to consider. Ms. Hubbard mentioned about it being part of the townships before we annexed it. If it was part of the townships, we had absolutely nothing to talk about. We could not say anything of what it was going there, the township would have figured it out, the township would have built it. The same way that we hear and. Multiple times we hear about the traffic issue, the traffic issue is a completely a thing. Ninety percent of it is because of the townships. Nobody goes to the townships and say, can you stop building, so we don't have the traffic going through there? So, the same way that we don't have any say there. If this was part of the still annexed area, none of this could have been, or if it was not annexed, none of this conversation could have happened. Anything that the townships deemed fit could go there. And we wouldn't have any opinions on it. The developer has changed the designs. To accommodate a lot of the concerns. This is very different than was what originally came, they listen to people. Which a lot of times developers don't do. So while I understand that we can postpone for them to add something. Because it says, I think they have shown good faith so far in terms of. Working with us and working and listening to the public, so. I would say that I feel that they would be able to still listen and add some of those things, and I think they will do that. In terms of the public response. I really appreciate everything taking the time, I had a very good conversation um with. Ms. Ackers that put the petition together. And when the petition first came out and in our November twenty-seventh meeting that we were um. Discussing this first, um Lindsay sent us the first round of the petition signatures she had, about. Three hundred so of it. I spent couple hours with that list. And. Yes, there are people from surrounding areas, there were people that are not even out of the state. But even within those that were Dexter, Michigan. Dexter, Michigan is a large area in terms of zip code. There were only thirty people in that three hundred some that I could. See that they were residents of the city of Dexter. We have received emails, we have had many of you here. While our city and the feel of it and the how we care about it is bigger than the footprint of only the residents of the city. My responsibility as a council member is to be a steward for those. Who are within the city. Last time in November, we had eleven people speaking to us. Only two households in Dexter. Tonight, we have had nine people speaking to us, four people in Dexter. I came also to Dexter for the feel of Dexter. And I do believe that. The conversations and everybody's voice matters in this. We are four thousand five hundred people. I know those have, that I personally could put a name. To somebody who has opposed this to me. I cannot add more than fifty, sixty people that have opposed from the within the city of Dexter. So I have from one hand, a developer that has worked and listened to people who are within and outside of the city of Dexter to update and be able to revise their vision. Bring a landscaping plan that we seldom see to this level of detail at this level of the proposal and project. To listen to people. And and be able to say that I want to make sure that the voices are heard. There are voices that are speaking more publicly. But I also have heard from residents who are in support of this project. And just because they are might not stand here tonight, that doesn't mean they don't exist. That doesn't mean that their voices are not there. And that doesn't mean that I can just say that they have nothing to say. So my perspective here, sitting tonight, is that I need to balance a lot of things. A lot of things that it would be a lot easier outside of this table to just have my angle and my opinion and go exactly by that. But I have to sit here in terms of looking at our city as a whole. Looking at our housing. Looking at our tax revenues, looking at our, what is financially best for the city? What looks best for the city? All of those things combined is the package that I need to listen to as well as of course, the, the voices of our, our residents and even beyond. I am not minimizing anybody's voice. I just want to make sure that all of them are heard, whether they are opposite to the project or in favor of the project. So from my perspective, the planning commission has said that this project, they have given a green light. Our fire department has given a green light. We have seen a lot of landscape work. Um, proposal to this. We have seen the developer bringing something that has been revised. I am sure that some of those items that Mr. Michelle's brought up tonight that are not specifically said that they would be willing to add. I see, I see them nodding. So with that, I, I I do think that um, for me, this project is the best it can be at this point of what is at front of us. Would I have wished it could have been something else? Yes. But the same way that I'm not going to wish for anybody's property in this town. As long as they put something at front of us that passes our laws and gets green lights from all the experts that should have a point on that. This is another one of those. So thank you.
Go on, is it done?
Can I say one more brief thing, please?
Sure.
I was you five years ago. Only the development I was concerned about as a resident was a bit more controversial than this one. Here's what I've learned. You can show up as a concerned resident numerous times and never even have your comments acknowledged. So the fact that if you even received an email back from somebody or had a personal conversation with somebody on this council because you were concerned, that's an improvement over what I experienced as a concerned resident five years ago. So I appreciate older new members on council who made an adjustment there. You might then, like me, win yourself a seat on council. Maybe you'll get the greatest number of votes among a field of six people vying for three spots. But you might only learn that the past and current council majority has and will continue to interpret our ordinances in ways that favor the developments they want, regardless of what the public says. And some of those council members may say, well, then vote me out of office. Okay? The only thing that will stop the current trajectory of large format, high density housing in our downtown, whether it be the Pelham, Mill Creek Flats, Millennium Place, whatever might end up at thirty forty-five Broad Street. I mean, if, if you're concerned about this, look at our website, send me an email. I'll let you know what else is on the list. There's more to come. The only thing that will stop that is a turnover in the majority composition of council. The quickest way to do that is a recall election. Recall the elected officials who think that this project and others like it are consistent with the small town character of Dexter. And if you wait, if you wait till twenty twenty-four, I'm, this is not part of any ballot proposal committee. I am I'm informing the public what their options are. They are going to leave this meeting frustrated, feeling like they don't have an option.
You just put me into a bucket. I'm nodding. So.
I never mentioned your name.
Do you have, well, excuse me, do you have any other comments?
I just wanted to let them know waiting for elections will be, it will be too late. There's a lot of development in the works. And if you really want to make a change, I honestly believe that's the only way that's going to make this happen. And I appreciate you coming tonight. I would love you to come to every meeting. If you really wanted to make a change, that's the best way to make it happen. My job is to advocate for you. I can't do it at this table to get other people to agree with me. So I'm going to communicate directly with you. I have that right.
So now.
All of our jobs here to advocate, just because our opinions might be different, that doesn't mean that I'm not advocating for people that I have conversations with. So if you think you're the only one having conversations with people and this is what you're implying, you are eliminating the voices of all of those people in the city who might not have been speaking with you. Unless you're assuming that if anybody is not speaking with you, that their voice doesn't matter, that their voice should not be heard just because they are not talking to you or they have an opposite view of you.
Okay, Georgia, I'm going to ask you to call the vote. I'm going to repeat the motion that was made by Semifaro and seconded by Aldag is on page twenty of the packet. And it concluded the choice of is insubstantial compliance and referred to the PUD. It included continues to meet the intent of the PUD district and included moves to approve the Pelham condominiums. With the well, there's, there's three conditions, but number two has A through I or L, whatever that is. Um, so there's a number of conditions on that approval as stated on page twenty. Georgia, please call the vote.
Semi Faro?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Aldag?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. The final site plan has been approved. Like to thank the applicants, like to thank the people that have taken the time to do this. I'm more than happy to meet on, there's a whole bunch of stuff that was said here in the last half hour. Okay, but frankly, everybody sat here patiently for an hour and forty-five minutes since the public hearing ended. Okay, so I think um, maybe if we could get some better attendance at some of the workshops, we could have those discussions. But we're going to move on in the agenda. So again, thank you. You're welcome. Stay for the rest of the, of the meeting. I'm going to go to, onto I.
But can I just, can you tell them when the next workshop will be?
We have a budget workshop on Wednesday.
Which is?
Yeah, yeah. I as communication. We have our upcoming meeting list in the packet. Does council have any questions on the upcoming meeting list? I'm on page fifty-one of the packet now. Seeing none, we'll go to our first report tonight, which is our finance director, treasurer, assessor, Marie. Thanks for being patient.
Evening, Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
You have my written report in front of you. The only thing I have to add is that um, there is some legislation that has been proposed by Cedars of Dexter and affiliated groups um, to have their type of facility be exempt from taxation. The hearing is scheduled right now for Wednesday. The Michigan State League has asked me to come up and testify um, as to the impact of making that property exempt would have in our community. Um, so that's if, if they can't get it pulled, um, that's where I'll be at noon on Wednesday. That's all I have to do. Any questions?
Marie, on, on uh, on your cash balances by fund report. Remind me where the two hundred and twelve thousand that we set aside for sewer, which, which line is that in on the, on the, on page, you know, you've got the sewer cash, I'm sorry, the sewer, you've got the cash balances by fund report, right? On page sixty and sixty-one. Which fund is the two twelve in?
It's in general.
Okay, it's in general. So it's included in one of those investment Huntington Bank ones?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have it in a separate account. I just have it separated off.
But it's in, it's part of that. It's part of either the two million eighty thousand or the million. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Thank you. Jamie?
What percentage of our property tax revenue is the Cedars?
It's almost two percent.
What was your question? What percentage?
Percentage of our property tax revenue is the Cedars.
Is it, oh, it's the Cedars.
Well, it's almost two percent of real property. I didn't include personal in that calculation.
Other questions from Marie? You put a lot of work into it. There's a lot of good information here. I appreciate it. Thank you for what you do. Next up is our public services superintendent. Tim, thanks for being patient, sticking around.
How's everybody tonight?
Good, you?
Good, thanks.
What? Sorry, quick question. So this is maybe an irrational fear, a personal problem. But if you say you filled in a sinkhole on Walcourt, can you explain to me what, like, how do you, how do we know if there's a sinkhole? What do you do? Do you think there are other sinkholes around town?
No, I don't. It's from uh, what we're doing, the potting for the D S M I from checking the lines. One of those where it's filled in and just sink a little bit further. It wasn't, it was only about that.
Okay, so there's like nothing that you could see in the city that's going to like swallow my car? Okay, thank you.
Although the, I mean, there, there have been instances in the past where, you know, we found um, water lot, water mains that were abandoned and not abandoned properly and it gets a hole in it and then it deteriorates and then it fills in. But usually, I mean, you're, we're not talking about, you know, the La Brea Tar Pit or, you know.
Yeah, if I was a bigger city, sort of like what he's saying, water mains sewers, storm that are six feet nine inch, that's, you know, like biggest storm, I mean, sewer guy is fifteen inches.
Okay, thank you.
Zach? Uh, for the barricades for the summer concert series, is that going to be a hardship on staff to, to get someone out there? To do that, removals?
Friday night, but it's at ten o'clock, I think.
All, all volunteers or you're going to have to volunteer people?
No, we have a
Okay. All right, thank you. Jamie?
Do you have any update on the line striping on Dan Hawey?
Um, we did talk to Chris about it the other day. He got ahold of contractor. Some discrepancies right now. We're looking forward or moving forward to, uh, they better change right now. And uh, so when we go do finding a line striping in July, hopefully. If they haven't done it, we're going to do that and take that out.
Yeah, they, 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 they've been communicative. Um, they're, they're having problems with their subcontractor and getting them out. And so we told them that, you know, if, if they can't get their sub out by the time that um, our line striper comes out, um, we'll just have our line striper do it and uh, keep the retainage to cover it.
And then it also says talks to resident about lowering their curb box. Is that just like how abrupt the curb is? What, what's a curb box?
Resident called up on Dan. It's going to be part of the decision that people um, but their curb box, some places they stick out like thirty dollars.
Your water, your water shut off box.
Got it.
Your water shut off box is referred to as a curb stop box.
Right, right, right. We have one in our driveway that's, okay, I just didn't know, cause earlier I talked about how abrupt the driveway entrances are in Dexter Crossing, for example. Um, anyways, I don't, that's what.
This one just happened to be, it's been already to be prepared. Fortunately, it's included in this, it's not going to be cost.
Thanks.
How many, how many residents are you following? Or have you followed? I apologize if that's inappropriate.
I think when I said, and I think we're going to be around a hundred and eighty-seven.
Wow, it's about over ten percent of our, that's great.
It's pretty significant.
Yeah, it's double what we're doing. So we're supposed to do up to, I think it was eighty-something uh, to stay, everyone required to do.
That's great, Jim.
Doing it, so I got it. Bob's been on it and it's been rocking them. And uh, one good thing about it is I'm not, there's different types, styles of these risers. One of them's are called buffalo box, which they're just, it's a three inch riser, but it goes from the bottom up and then it's, they get full of dirt, they bend and break and all this stuff. So part of this, we'd love to be able to replace those. So it's, it's worked out really well.
Good. Other questions for Tim? Thanks to you and your team. Okay, yeah, please.
Those are two. Number two, we're having problems with the filter media. That's uh, up and running. Everything's going good now. And we did uh, offer two positions and been accepted for two lead operators up in the DPW. Eventually, like, vulnerable is a part of it.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, I knew her, community development manager. How you doing? How you feeling?
I'm feeling a little bit better, getting a little tired, but um, we'll let the medicine take its course and hopefully I'll be back to work soon. Um, so you have my report in front of you. Before I go into um, the minor updates that I've got, please let me know if you have any questions.
Michelle, I would like to understand what the and I don't need an answer tonight, but for the public workshop that's going to be at thirty forty-five Broad on June eleventh. Can you just write in your report the next time a written description of what the format is going to be?
Yep.
Well, how that's going to play out, what people will do? Are they going to listen? Is there going to be a presentation? Are we going to put dots up, whatever it might be that you have envisioned? Can you just describe that? I've had a couple of questions about that.
Yep, I actually had a meeting with Megan today to finalize how this is going to come together. Um, it will be a combination of everything you said, less, except the dots. This is going to be more of an interactive, kind of like a game board. Um, but there will be a presentation. Um, I will be tapping you to uh, do a little bit of a um, um, explanation of the history because um, you've been here longer than I have and um, there's a certain amount of um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? You, you tend to explain the history quite well. Um, um, but then the consultants and I will do everything else as far as explaining what the parameters are, how to play the game. Um, like I said, it's going to be a board game. And how it will all come together so that at the end um, uh, the different groups uh, will be able to present um, their ideas and um, and will move forward uh, with that to get consensus. So
Okay.
I think people will like it. It's going to be something you've never done before.
If you could get together a draft agenda, I would appreciate it for that public meeting.
Yep, that will happen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Jamie has one. I have a follow-up on that. How are we advertising for that?
So we are going to be putting, well, first of all, I've been mentioning it at every board and commission that I attend. Um, there will be a public hearing, I'm sorry, public notification in the paper. I'll be doing a press release that will also go out to the Sun Times and M Live um, to provide uh, some more details. Um, it will get up on the website. It'll be on the calendar. We're trying to um, get as much information about it out there as possible.
I think if we get the agenda, my idea was I'd like to see the agenda put together sooner than later, at least to draft one and get it into our email updates. Stages of it are, how we're going to spend two hours or three hours, whatever it is. I, I think it's nebulous as a
Right.
as a line as well.
I mean, right, as soon as you firm that up, I, I mean, I was hoping that I would hear that there's going to be something printed in the Sun Times newspaper, something like a press release. I mean, I would like people to have as many opportunities as they can. Something like a press release, I, I mean, I would like people to have as many opportunities as they can to find out about this.
Well, I'd like to have input on what, what they're thinking because of, maybe we don't like the idea.
Right. So, right, time is of the essence.
Right.
I would still rather have people know that something is happening, even if we can't say what it is, I think people will.
Yeah, I agree.
Show up, they'll be interested, even if they don't know, it's like.
I believe we'll be able to accommodate both of what you've asked for. Okay, um, uh, so, um. Oh, let's see, I had something I was gonna tell you and now it's skipped, uh, it's left my mind. I can't think of what I was gonna update you on, I apologize.
All right, well, if it comes up, we'll come back to you, okay, how's that?
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Any verbal from anybody on the board and commissions, section J four? Okay, I'll go to, uh, City Manager Report on page three, please.
Sure, uh, start off with, if anybody has any questions? If not, um, real quick, uh, there, there was an item in the supplement that I forgot to print out, I'm sorry. Um, that, uh, Elham Metal's looking to donate a sculpture, uh, to the city of a butterfly. Um, and so Josh has been calling, or he put it in front of, uh, our, our Earth Culture Heritage Committee and will be calling a art selection committee meeting. Um, as the, the next step in that process, um, before it comes to city council. Um, we have our spring cleanup, cleanup day, uh, coming up on May twentieth, which is, it's always the third Monday of May. Um, plus the, you can put out additional bulk items as much as you want. Um, Tim kinda beat me to it, but, uh, we did offer, um, two lead operator positions, um, to, uh, Rob Hare and Todd V Bon. Um, we think that they're both great candidates and we think that, um, they're gonna really help shape the future of, of the E P W, uh, going forward. Um, I did get an email, uh, from, uh, Commander Flores at, uh, the Sheriff's Office asking if, um. We'd be able to find time for, uh, the sheriff or representatives of the sheriff's office to come and talk to us, um, about, um. The public safety mileage request that'll be, uh, coming up this year. So I don't know if council is interested in, you know, doing a work session before an upcoming council meeting, um, and inviting them to, to, uh, present.
I had a question about that, cause in your staff report, it shows work session requests, but in their actual letter, it just says their email, they just want to attend a board meeting. Is this something that you think is more involved than the ten to twenty minute pre-arranged conversation?
Yeah, so, so, so I, I asked if, um, if, you know, ten, ten minutes of, you know, pre-arranged participation would be sufficient, he said that, that they wanted at least thirty minutes.
They want thirty minutes. I would be fine thirty minutes before a regularly scheduled meeting.
You wanna do it before, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I could see like six thirty on a Monday. Would work for me.
Fine.
Yeah.
Then I'll, um, plan that for, uh, one of our meetings and. Yeah, probably, and, and the last one in June or in July.
Do you think they're asking for this because they specifically want us to be familiar with it, or they want them to look to be familiar with it?
So, so I, I think they want to present, um, what the mileage dollars have gone towards, uh, since, since the last time it was, it was adopted. Um, and the plan going forward for what, what those dollars.
But that would be of general interest to them, hold up.
I, I would assume so.
Right, we don't make a decision from that.
Correct. Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's just information. Um, I was able to get, uh, the last of the, the budget information out, uh, this afternoon. Uh, I believe this afternoon, so you should have it all in your, your emails, um, sorry that went out so late. I, um, did my best to get done as, as soon as I could, um. But, um, I think we'll have a, have a good meeting on, on Wednesday, um, as we work through, through the budget and those conversations. And then, um, we held our, uh, in-person road meetings last week, um, due to the weather, they weren't. Very well attended, uh, so we opted to have a, um, to schedule a virtual meeting. Uh, to present on all of the, the road projects that are coming up this, this construction season, um, so that's scheduled for May twenty ninth, uh, at six thirty P M. Um, the, um, there, there should be an item on, on the city website calendar, um. With the, uh, with the Zoom link, I also put it out in the email update and Facebook, if anybody would like to attend.
You said Wednesday, Thursday for the budget?
Uh, it, I believe it's, uh, Wednesday the fifteenth.
Correct. Okay, it says Thursday of May.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, so, sorry, um, it, Jamie had actually caught that too, um, and I had, had included, uh, an update in the, um, in the supplement that. It should be Wednesday the fifteenth.
That's up.
That's up.
Did anybody, do you know, did anybody show up for the, for the road meetings?
We, we, we had three, three people attend each of the three meetings. And, you know, e- each person had specific things that they wanted to talk about, and we were able to, to talk through those things with, with each of them, um, but. Especially with, with Baker Road and how impactful, um, that has the potential to be. We wanna make sure that everybody has a chance to, to come out and, and, you know, ask their questions and hear it from, uh, from the engineer directly.
There, I posted something on Nextdoor, there was questions from people, um, you know, they asked, it could be done at a different time, and I told them. That I thought there was a series of meetings that were being done on, on, on the night specifically, so, um. I, I'm sure they'll be happy here that there's a retreat, and it's a good idea, yeah. Questions, does it, Zach?
I would offer that traffic and vehicle ordinances and fire code review can probably leave. The, the list, we haven't discussed them since the last election, and so we're probably dead. I would also offer for your discussion with waste management, part of the, the fee schedule discussion. Um, waste management is a money-making machine, if you look at their stocks and their, their stock buybacks, which basically means they have more cash than they know what to do with. Um, that if we do continue with them, that we have language that it'd be limited to inflation or whatever percent taxes, uh, property taxes. With language that if they have a, a stock buyback within the year, we don't go up, cause that's a signal that they have more than enough money and they're not hurting and. Um, and perhaps some other language that if their dividend is higher than the median for the waste management, um, stocks that we not have an increase. Cause again, that's a signal that they don't need more money. Which I know they're private enterprise, they're free to ask for how much money they want, but we're here to advocate for folks to get the best deal.
Yeah, and, and I, I anticipate that council will s- see a draft of, um, uh. The revised contract at the next meeting, uh, for discussion. Um, before bringing it back for, for consideration.
You have other questions for Justin? Okay, um, just a reminder, I'm highly likely not gonna be at the next meeting, so Joe will be sitting up here with the gavel. Treat him well, I wouldn't get through the meeting. Joe, thanks for. Been willing to do it. I had intended to ask my questions on the, due to eleven public vision and meeting under my report, but. When I saw it on Michelle's, I did it there, so I don't have much to say here, remind, um, does anybody have any questions for me on anything? Yeah, Jamie.
Just generally the Citizen Advisory Committee for the D D A, I'm just. Where that's at, how many people, how they're being included and, and like meetings, that's sort of.
So we, we don't have, we, we don't have as many volunteers as we'd like, there's still openings if people want to do it. Um, technically, because they don't have enough to have a quorum, they're not gonna be. Formally meeting, but the intent is to. Use those people to give them a chance to look at the proposed projects and the. Strategic objectives that are identified by D D A as part of the strategic, strategic planning process.
Are they?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna bring them in and ask them to comment, you know, like anybody else.
Right, uh. I mean, I don't know if there's a way or if it would be appropriate or not appropriate to just, are they automatically included in emails saying, here's the upcoming D D A meeting, here's the upcoming D D A meeting, is there any like? Or, or have they been notified to say, hey, D D A meets us up and please come to any and all D D A meetings or what?
Two, two of them regularly attend the D D A meetings, the other ones I don't pay attention, I don't.
Okay.
I mean, I know they're all engaged. The purpose is to get as much public comment as we can.
Right, right.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to. Oh, any other, uh, council member reports under number eight, anything bad? Saying none, we'll move on to the consent agenda where there are seven items.
I'm moved, we approved the seven items on the consent agenda, they're all consideration items, number one, bills and payroll. And the amount of five hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents. Number two, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendments, three, setting a public hearing, hearing for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Milage rate and budget on June tenth, twenty twenty-four. Four, setting a public hearing for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, water, sewer and rubbish rate ordinance on June tenth, twenty twenty-four. Five, summer concert series road closures request from May to August, six. Memorandum of understanding with Teamsters Local two fourteen for amendment to classification and wage tables for pre. Twenty-eleven employees and number seven, sale of equipment via online auction.
Thank you, is there a second? Second, second by several girl. Thank you, Georgia, please follow vote to approve the seven consent agenda items.
Griffin?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Semi Faro?
Yes.
Hubbard? Michelle's?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Uh, there's no unfinished business. So we'll move down to new business. M one is consideration of a resolution to amend the future land use map. In the two thousand nineteen Cillia Dexter Master Plan to designate properties located at twenty-five oh five. Twenty-five twenty-one, twenty-five thirty-seven Baker Road is Village Residential One. Is there a motion from any council member?
Well, the resolution says some affair on Hubbard, so maybe they should.
I'm gonna get down to it, Zach.
Eight one twenty-five.
Yeah.
Oh, my bad, I apologize. I thought I had taken those out from a previous.
Is there, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Sanam, motion by Aldag, is there a second?
Second.
Second by several girl. Is a discussion needed? Jamie?
Okay, so, we're in M one, right?
We are, we are in M one, yes, yes.
Uh. I think my concern here is. Whether or not we have a consistent vision for what we want to happen there and to make sure that we're not making. These master plan changes sort of at the whim of. Somebody else, again, it feels very responsive and not necessarily intentional, so there was a time it was zoned one way and then the schools. Took the building they wanted for their purpose as they are allowed to do, and then they were done with that building for that purpose and not wanted off their hands, so now we're gonna go back and amend our master plan. To accommodate that, and I would rather it be. We keep something zoned the way we think it needs to be zoned for like the best future use, and when you. And maybe I said this the last time we discussed this, oftentimes you see around schools, these few properties that sort of have been swallowed up. And it just, it's like a waiting game until they get swallowed up, and so this property was swallowed up and now it's being spat back out. Or how long until it's swallowed up again and spat back out, and we have to go to this effort of changing and not changing, I would rather it be, what do we actually think is the best use there and I. I can't imagine somebody had said, well, it's possible those three properties, you know, could be. Redeveloped and you'd have some nice multifamily, you don't think, I, I just feel like the location of that, I, I don't see it ever being anything but a swallowed up. School property. So from a long-term planning perspective, um, I appreciate that they wanted to sell the property and this is what needs to happen, and they're willing to do it. Are they gonna come back in five years and say, actually, we want that back? So I'll vote against it for that reason, it just doesn't feel long-term intentional.
Thanks for that, that's Joe.
I think, um, I agree with what Councilmember Griffin said as far as we should be intentional on this. Um, I think this is a great example of, of the way the city goes out of its way to work with the school district. Um, going back a long, long ways, um. We had a well that was requested by the school district to be used for irrigation. And at the time, they didn't wanna tie into, even though we had the well head protection program. The schools didn't wanna tie into that because of the cost that would be associated with the water, that would be there, and the city agreed and allowed that to continue. Um, there's a point in time during the Great Recession when, well, when the high school was put in. The schools were tasked with seventy-five or eighty percent of the cost of, uh, sheriff deputy. And there was a time when the schools came to us and said, we can't afford this, can you pick up some of this? We'll renegotiate every year with you on what that cost is, we said, okay, we went along with that. There's just item after item after item where the city has gone out of its way to. Up up schools anyways, they possibly can. The senior center is another one, the most recent, um, and. Although they are a big drain on our resources because all of their property is non-taxable. It's a big drain on resources because we have to pay for the roads, every single child comes in to the schools on those roads. And then the city roads paid by city rhythms, but it's part, we're part of the community, that's part of our burden, so. Hopefully, we don't have too many of these things where we get these quick turnarounds on rezoning requests, but thankfully, we can help out on this one and keep this one.
I, um, I did call Michelle today and ask if this house is served by public water. Or if it has a well, cause I know there's physically, you can still see a well in the front yard of the twenty-five oh five. And she made the point that, um, whatever the next step would be when it returns to use is when they could. Require them to back up to public water as opposed to using the well, while it was a school property, if it's. It's using the well, we kinda acquiesced, so. Okay, seeing no further hands, we have a motion to approve, or, or motion to amend the future land use map. I didn't write down who, who made the motion for it. Thank you. Please call the vote when you're ready, Georgia.
Aldag?
Yes.
Semi Faro?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries five to one, um. New business item M two is consideration of submitting a request to planning commission. To hold a public hearing and provide a recommendation to council for a proposed change to zoning ordinance section eleven eleven. Design standards regarding primary building entrance fronting public roads. Uh, Joe, you asked this item be included on the agenda?
Yep.
Would you like to make that motion?
I will make that motion to consider the request of planning commission to hold the public hearing for. Zone order that's section eleven dot one design standard. To building placement orientation, be building placement orientation standard, primary building.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Hubbard? Joe, do you wanna get a little background on?
Yeah, just after the, uh, discussion in the senior center, um. The ordinance, I completely understand what the, the Baker Road corridor intent is. Um, I, I agree with the idea that, um, we want to redevelop in this way, um. I do feel like we have some ordinances that are so strict and so rigid that they don't give. Or allow for, um, consideration for situations, this is a, the senior center, for instance, was a relatively. Unique situation, but it's possible another situation can come up, the, it's. It just feels like some ability to have some flexibility on this would be. Uh, in the best interest of the city overall, when it comes to the value weight. These types of developments.
Discussion on the request, Zach?
I have some, some just nippy questions, cause I tend to be precise with language.
I have some, some just nippy questions, cause I tend to be precise with language. Um, as this is worded, I read that the wording is determined by staff. Would that bar consultants from generating billables to provide language?
Uh, I don't know, however staff best come up with that, my, my presumption was is that I would not come up with the best wording to be able to implement that. Think, I, I mean, I think maybe right now is the time to discuss and say what. What could potentially go into there, I just didn't know myself what necessarily would be the best way to achieve that. That flexibility.
Alright, um, as I read this. The planning commission is charged with preparing materials, holding a public hearing and sending it to us. Um, that would appear to. Not including us reviewing whatever they propose before it goes to a public hearing, is that the intent?
I would assume that staff would prepare it and then plan a mission for that and then they get set it up. With, and they're either gonna, I would assume staff is gonna come up with it. With the intent of what the request is, land commission is gonna review it, they're either gonna say, no, we don't recommend it, or yes, we do recommend it and send it back.
Alright.
Are you suggesting a different way?
Well, yeah, I, I believe greater flexibility, one and one other point is I, this use of the term waiver, I believe our zoning ordinance use modification. Um. So what I, the spaghetti I would throw on the wall is instead. Directing the planning commission to prepare recommendations for more flexibility. In our form based codes. And I would even suggest that it be more broad to include village commercial. Um. Downtown, both of the corridors, since we're looking at it, we might as well look at them all, so we're consistent in the application. Um. And so.
I'm okay with the content, absolutely, I think that's a great suggestion, I'm worried that this particular part will.
Get bogged down.
Lawson will be six months. But I, I, I think that's a good point, I mean, there, this isn't the only. Item that we might necessarily have. Some questions about it, and I mean. With respect to planning, a lot of work went into these ordinances and I appreciate that. The, the thing is, it's very hard to go through kind of. Sit down what all those situations are where you might have a. Thought that there could be some kind of additional. Modification to the, to the ordinance, um. I don't know, I must, I think it's an excellent suggestion, I, I agree with it, I, I just.
Michelle, you have something to add?
Yes. Well, um. Knowing how things went down, um, when this came in front of planning and ultimately came in front of council. Um, there was an item on planning commission's agenda last week where I did, um. Um, lay out the intent of the Baker Road corridor as it's, um. Uh, established in the master plan and, um. And then talked about how the corresponding zoning district, what its intent is and et cetera. And, um, I asked the planning commission to, um, have a discussion. Um, about the master plan goals and the regulations that are in the ordinance, um, to achieve those goals. And asked them to determine what if any changes they would want to make, um, so that we could. Uh, continue on, um, uh, to improve the ordinance, um. And they were. Quite definitive in their discussion, um. And they. Did not want to make any changes, um, I. E- even though they have said that, um, if city council does approve the, um. The motion that was made, staff will, um. Um, take it back to the planning commission with, um, with these goals, with the, um, intent. And with suggestions on how the language could be, um, changed in the ordinance to provide. Both planning mission and council flexibility.
Sounds good. Is there another question? Okay.
Yeah, I think I just sort of related to that, I mean, I saw that staff update. And then this agenda item and thought, okay, well, what would the point be, so I guess I'm just curious, do. People in favor of this thing, this might be a situation where planning commission recommends against and. We still move forward with it, I mean, is it, if planning commission recommends against, does it come to city council?
I don't know, I said at the last meeting when we were talking about it for the school site plan that. There's, this is one of those cases where. If I had, if I'd thought about the change, I would have brought it up. At the time and questioned, why are we doing it? I mean, we have, there's plenty of examples along Baker Road. And Dexter Avenue Road where the front entrance is not. Facing the street.
I'm just, I get it.
So, so I don't, I don't know what planning commission is gonna do, I think, I don't know why they were talking about it on Monday. I think this is like two ships passing the night because. He, he submitted it on Monday and all of a sudden they're talking about it, but I mean, everybody's talking about it in the community, what, you know, they, they all think it's dumb. And we, we never had it until just a few years ago, it's sort of like your comment about why did we change something that was working? You know.
I guess you speak procedurally if they, if they don't recommend it, does it actually come to us, or do we only see things that they, cause I know in the past, so one time since I've been counsel at least. They recommended something for approval and we denied it. If they don't recommend something to council, do we actually see it, does it leave planning commission?
Well, we're asking for a recommendation, whether we, whether what we do with the recommendation is up to us.
But so procedurally, they could, something could cross their table and they would say, we recommend against it and that comes to us.
Right. They, they could, they could say, we recommend the change, we've, we've, we've looked at the different things that staff gave us, we don't recommend accepting those.
Right.
In theory, we could. Vote if we thought it was better.
Right.
If I could make a suggestion.
Um, the intent is that I, I would hope what they would do is that they would hold the public hearing. If people feel strongly about something one way or the other, we get that comment out there in the public. They can report back on the comments that were made and, you know, there's. You, you gotta play it out one step at a time, right?
Sean?
Yes, Michelle.
So, the, the motion, if I'm not mistaken, was, um. To submit, uh, request to planning commission to hold a public hearing and provide a recommendation to council, et cetera, um. That opens up the opportunity, um, for the planning commission to say, no, we don't want to hold the public hearing. And we don't want to provide a recommendation. My suggestion would be that you consider amending the motion to direct staff. To initiate an amendment and take it to the planning commission for their consideration. Otherwise, this may have the. Potential not to come back to you at all.
Well, if they choose not to do it, we can always take the next step, right?
There is not a next step if they choose not to do anything.
No, we just direct you to initiate an amendment.
Right, but if for.
I'm saying, I'm saying if we, if we do this and they choose not to do it, we can always do what you're suggesting, right, is that true?
Correct. But if you're looking for.
It'd be a month later.
Correct.
I mean, we're trying to, we, I mean, this is a cooperative, this is meant to be a cooperative thing, we'd like to play your mission's thoughts on it. As the, as what, as how I'm interpreting of the. The motion.
Understood. I was thinking of it from a timeliness standpoint.
Understood. Did you have your hand up? No. Okay, Georgia, call the motion or call the vote, please.
Griffin?
Uh, yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yep.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries, uh, new business item M three, which was formerly K seven, consideration of the award of pavement marketing services to Eminem Pavement Markings for a amount not to see thirty three thousand two fifty five fourteen. Zach, would you like to make a motion?
No, I just wanna ask the questions. You should know that by now. I know, but I like to ask anyway, I appreciate that, I'll you.
I'll make the motion for the sake of discussion, so Zach can ask his questions.
Okay. Move by one, second by seven girl. Thank you.
Zach? So our charter says that when we do something that's above a certain threshold, we have to go out for bids. This is above that threshold, right? It is. And did our bid from twenty twenty three say it could extend for multiple years? I'd have to go back and check, um. This wouldn't be the first time that, that we've done that. Okay, I, so my concern is that even though it's a great deal and they've done generally good work. That I don't believe it's consistent with our charter to just say we'd like them, we're gonna keep doing it, um, cause there may be someone who'll do it for twenty thousand. Um, and the charter is the charter. Uh, I would also say. I would like to poke them more on the painting of the bicycle lanes, you cannot imagine the impact of having that. Of what having that painting will do for traffic calming. Uh. So I am a little disappointed that they've kind of let that just sit for a year since we asked them on. Hmm. Uh, one other question. Would the striping, and I've asked this before. Would that include potential restriping of Baker South in a project to match the lane widths? N- not, not as part of this work, the, the, this work is, is to, is strictly to restripe existing. Alright, thank you. Um, now.
Is this the same vendor that did Dan Hoey?
It is not. That was the, the other bidder. Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, um. If Zach is referencing this section thirty one establishment of procedures by ordinance, a purchasing procedure to be followed before making any such purchase or contract to purchase competitive bid shall be obtained except. In the securing of professional services for the city or when the purchasing agent for the city is exempted from the purchasing ordinance because of volume. Or when the city council shall determine that no advantage to the city would result from competitive bidding or upon the presence of an emergency, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, i- in, in my world. As a civil engineer, what, what I would prefer is that we are not awarding. Um. I would think we're approving a change order to add this to the current contract. And we have a contract with that with twenty three, twenty twenty three work. If we wanna extend that contract, we can by change order. It's done, it's done all the time. And, and I would say that what we would, the right way to do this would be for us to approve a change order. With an existing vendor to continue providing services. In the amount of whatever it's recommended there, thirty three thousand five hundred. And then you can, and you can amend the existing contract. To do the additional work. And it's completely within. The rights of the charter and everything else. What?
So with that in mind, because. You know, I don't wanna, Zach, I don't wanna. Go against the charter either. Um, so can I amend the motion to say? Well, I guess it didn't say anything, that we could, that we are.
Well, it's just, it, it, it's presented, and I, sorry, Justin, I didn't think about this when I wrote it that way, um, but. I, I was, I was presented as if we're awarding something that's been bid out when it was bid a year ago and we have an existing vendor. If we want the, the, wanna add work to the vendor, change order is the proper way to do that.
Okay, so then, so did the motion need to approve a change order?
To approve a change order with pavement.
Okay, so I'd like to amend my motion then, whatever it.
Okay.
Yep. To approve a change order. To the current contract?
Yep.
With Eminem Pavement Markings. To extend services through twenty twenty four for an amount not to exceed thirty three thousand five hundred dollars?
Very good, yep. Joe, is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Questions, Jamie?
Yep, just a follow up, so in their letter, uh, one eighteen of the packet, it says. This does not include the Central Street bike lane, this is specialty bike lane painting, we do not provide and will have to get services elsewhere. So they're not planning on doing any bike lane painting and they're not planning on subcontracting or doing anything else with bike lane.
Yep, so, so we'll, we'll have to, to deal with that separately.
What? Quick question on that. Do we have that bike lane painting budgeted, I mean. Where is that, cause I know we've kicked it around and I, maybe this is, maybe we're just talking about repainting what we already have. As opposed to improving it, cause I know we've also talked about that too, right? Um.
Um, I'd, I'd, I'd have to look at the roads budget.
Okay, so if we approve this though, we can still come back to that.
Yes.
And even possibly, well, they say they don't provide it, so we.
We can always bet, bet it out.
Okay.
The, uh, the, the other contractor did, did bid on that.
And we ultimately did not approve that.
We, 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 we approved the work with this vendor, hoping that they would come back and say. A- 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 at the time, we didn't know that they didn't provide this service, they said, we, we'll, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
And so now, now, now they've gotten back to us and said, they don't do it.
Zach, is that a dress your question?
Not really, when I, when I've asked about extended contracts from a bid, I've been directed that it has to explicitly say that it will be extended in the future. I say that in a context of where I do my day work, we have someone who is fantastic with tree planting and we wanted to renew them. And our council said, uh, gotta work that in the bid and in the contract.
So let me, let me give you an example of where we've done that for twenty some years. Without any objections. Waste management. That's been extended.
Yeah, and I, I went off, just because we've done it, doesn't mean it consists.
No, well, I, I'm saying, I, I don't think, I don't think, but I mean. I, what I'm trying to say is, I don't think that there's, I don't remember anybody saying you can't extend the contract. I don't remember when that situation's come up or. Been asked or. I'm trying to.
Yeah, well, so it's part of the description I, I heard.
Where I could think of it was waste manager.
Yeah, it's part of the, the reason why it's given, given that by the council, SEO, when I asked was. If other vendors knew there's potential for longer term, that that may affect how they bid it.
Yeah.
And so it's.
I'm with it. And I think we've extended chemical purchase contracts before. They've done it numerous places, wow, you didn't have.
Uh, no, I, I figured it out, I was, I was just looking at the. Considering the bike lane stuff and even if we added in the line.
We're not gonna do.
No, I know, just hear me out real quick, we're, we're, if, even if we added in the line item costs from the other bid, this bid to this bid, it would still be under. So that makes me more comfortable approving this and looking at bike, bike lane thing later.
Thanks, Mr.
Sure.
They're also giving that price a lot of power. Thinking they're giving us. So that, that price is not long. You did it separate.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah, the, the reality is, is that crew that would come in from PK is especially crew that's not gonna do lane striping at the same time, they're gonna come in and do just that, whatever we want for. There's mainline stripings, there's specialty symbols, there's. So, if you want PK to do it, just call him and tell him what, what you want, you want a direct quote for it.
Yep.
The one thing or whatever. Okay, Georgia, please call the vote to. Pro the change order.
Michelle's?
No.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Uh, yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries, we're down to non arranged participation. Is there anyone that would like to speak today?
Someone on.
Okay, name and address, please.
Ron Dar, two zero four five, Dan, Cloud Township. I just wanna clarify one issue, uh, I did not rise up in support or, or in opposition to the new building. My issue was that the taxpayer of the Dexter Community Schools, you have given this project. More variance than you provided the Dexter taxpayers in the Dexter Community Schools. Uh, the, uh. Dexter School proposed a similar rainwater retention issue. As part of the two thousand seventeen bond and it was not approved because it was not the best engineering practice. We were forced to dig a quarter mile through a set of woods, knock it down trees and connect the, uh, the turf field, the Duke turf field to the retention pond that was behind the high school. Instead of using a similar type of catch basin with overflow. Right behind the, right behind the turf case. We were told by your engineer that is not the best engineering practice, so we go ahead and I'll, I'll, I'll give you pictures. There's one, two people here in the, in the city are really concerned about what I'm saying. I'll give you pictures of what we did, bulldoze trees down, run about a quarter mile pipe. I'll give you pictures of what we did, bulldoze trees down, run about a quarter mile pipe from the new turf field over to the retention pond, instead of doing something similar, what you approved for this, for this, uh, Pelham project. That's my issue, okay? I'm not, I'm not writing in support of it. I'm not saying I, I'm, I'm supportive. I oppose it. I oppose what schools to pay instead of doing something similar that you approved at the Pelham project. Which is, where is the retention pond on the Pelham project? In the store. That's all. Okay?
Thank you.
I got the, I got the facts, I got the details, I got the emails.
Ron, someone will follow you, follow up with you on this.
I'll bring the, I'll bring the documents here, okay?
No, I'm done about the, I'm done about the Pelham. Your question is relates to Pelham.
All affects everybody, everybody in here, I think it pays Dexter tax. Okay, it affects everybody in this room. We spent a quarter million dollars doing this when we could've spent eighty doing similar to what we did at the Pelham project. That's all, okay? That's the issue.
It's not, it's not that simple, but I understand. Not, it's not as simple as you're making it out, but I understand. We'll fol- we'll follow up and answer your.
We have, the schools had their engineers, which are just as qualified as your engineers, and it was an acceptable solution.
Have a great night. Okay, we're down to council comments. Zach, would you lead us off, please?
Uh, yeah, I will start by agreeing with the comment that a right turn lane, um, to Dexter Pickney will be the most substantial improvement for congestion in downtown. Having counter-commuted, uh, through there for six years and change, it's not the bridge. It's the backup from that light in the afternoon. Um, and if I had a magic wand, that would be.
The number one project.
The, yeah, roundabout is, is nonsense compared to the impact that that would have. I will say for workshops, it is difficult for me to attend when they're, they're scheduled relatively late in the game, generally through winter. I have, have at least six weeks notice because of how my activities are scheduled, whether it's work or second work or third work or with family. Um, if they're before the meetings, that's generally easier. I would also say, we need to be mi- more mindful about ex parte contact for discretionary and quasi judicial decisions. It's great to talk to people, but if you're basing your decision on any information that you have heard, you need to share that with the body. Yep. Let's see. Next up, I do wanna say for, for Pelham, uh, there were, this is where I get a burned bridge on the other side. Uh, I am not personally opposed to residential out there for the number of units there. Uh, I don't have concerns about traffic because the amount of traffic generated by any residential that will fit there is insignificant to the flow of traffic that's on there. Um, I just didn't believe it met the criteria. And yes, I, I tend to be rather nitpicky on zoning stuff now. Inside how my, my, my works, all of those questions, I had about an hour and a half to really review the site plan. That's, that's all. And maybe it was a half hour of comments or something. Uh, I do take it very seriously. I have never had a planning or zoning decision I've made appealed or over, well, I've had it appealed, but I've never have it overturned. Whether it be before a judge or before a zoning board of appeals, every single code enforcement ticket I've issued has stuck. I've had case that went to Indiana Supreme Court, uh, that was stayed. So I do take it very seriously. I do fear with the approval tonight. So the, the site plan that was approved, the P U D that's approved, that's the contract between us and the developer. That's what they're obligated to do. They can say they wanna do other stuff or change this and that, but we cannot require them to do that. And with the number of the very simple errors and omissions in that site plan, we have handed a great opportunity to the folks who may oppose it. A judge will be able to look at it and see the things that aren't on the plan that our ordinance says has to be on it. So that does make me a bit nervous. And the last bit, this is kind of a personal anecdote stuck in there. No one be afraid to call me anything that you want to. I officiate beer league hockey. I can guarantee you, I've heard everything. Maybe if it's not for a polite audience, throw it to me outside on the street or whatever. I'm fine with that. That's all.
Thank you. Jamie?
Sure, just a brief comment. Uh, I think it is a great question to ask why more city of Dexter residents don't show up to meetings, or to even ask why those that do show up to meetings disproportionately represent those that are newer to the community. If you've heard from a number of the people who spoke, I've lived here one year, two years, I'm new to Dexter, I moved to Dexter for this reason. Or to ask why in the last election did only two people run for three spots? With only one, Dan, running in later as a write-in. I would submit that Catherine Hartley and Elizabeth Phelps, in the two thousand twelve Encyclopedia of the Sciences of Learning, have a great potential answer. It's called learning by extinction. Extinction learning refers to the gradual decrease in response to a conditioned stimulus that occurs when the stimulus is presented without reinforcement. The term extinction was first used by Ivan Pavlov in reference to his observation that the conditioned response to a queue that predicted food delivery decreased and eventually disappeared when food no longer followed the queue. People don't come to meetings, people don't write emails, people don't run for office because they don't feel heard, least of all acknowledged. I mean, again, kudos to people for actually getting back to the people who expressed concern. One person at this table showed me that courtesy when I was a concerned resident. But more than just giving people a time to hear them out and to let them vent their frustration, I mean, they wanna hear their vision for this community implemented. And I think more importantly, they want elected officials who are actually going to run on a specific platform. I mean, I would argue in recent years, I was the closest candidate that had any, you know, label to my name or what I stood for, and it wasn't positive. You wanna talk about names you recall. And yet, I was wooted into office. The people knew what I stood for and I was wooted into office. So I would just encourage everybody, you're gonna continue in this role, have a platform that's specific, that maybe says, I'm in favor of large format, high-density buildings, up and down Mill Creek. Or I'm not in favor of it, but I'm not gonna about note of those proposals when they come in front of me. I mean, that's what people are looking for, and that's why they don't come to the meetings. And that's why they just bother to not be engaged, because they've learned it doesn't matter. And if you feel differently, then I guess act in a way that makes people feel heard and seen and like it matters, and we will get more people at meetings, we will get more people engaged.
Thank you. So.
Thank you. One of the things for me, as when we talk about how Dexter feels, how, um, our town we want to be, our, um, small-town Dexter is the word community that we use. Community has a sense of conversation and belonging in it. Sitting at this table is a privilege. It's an honor that our residents give us to sit at this table and have difficult conversations on their behalf. Whether we were six on the ballot or two on the ballot, none of us got here without having conversations with people. And none of us at this table continue our day-to-day without conversations with our residents. To sit at this table and from this microphone call for recalling council members or using it as a I don't know if it is election conversation or announcing running or trying, I don't know, but just sitting at this table and using this microphone in an official capacity of a council member and asking others to recall other council members just because the vote that was done was not something one liked. That to me is opposite of wanting to listen to everybody in this town. Just because I represent a different perspective and I have at times agreed and disagreed with everybody at this table. Because there is no sense, it is not about agendas, it is about being able to serving our community. That's my perspective at this table. I was very disappointed of some of the comments tonight.
Joe?
On the, uh, topic of potential zoning ordinance amendments, I very much that hope that you will bring forward some of those ideas. I'm sure they'd be very helpful. I know there are a lot of zoning warrants that I don't, I wouldn't now, or obviously don't have experience in ordinance and that we have, so. Second, uh, I wanna apologize that I missed the budget meeting last week. I fully intended to go and I have no excuse, I just missed it. And I apologize to those that were there and staff, I'm sorry. I also want to thank mine for her service of being that tonight is her last night. And so I just wanna say thank you. Thank you for coming and being part of meetings and bringing up your opinions. Wish you best going forward. One last thing on, on public input. What I remember from workshops or master plans or order of plans from years past. Though, those, and I don't know how they've been like, because I haven't been part of them since I've been back in council now recently. Those were always extremely well attended. We didn't just have three or four residents that came to speak and, or came to participate in those discussions when we talked about thirty, forty-five broad or some of the other big projects, the, the master, even the master plan visioning. You know, we had a lot of input from the community. And, and again, I'm not talking about one or two or three people. I'm, I'm talking about thirty, forty, fifty people. I'm talking about having a large room and having, you know, a stack of those stickers going out and hundreds of them going up on different sheets and being broken out of the six different rooms with five or six or seven people in each group. The, the, the things that were worked on and were discussed and made their way into those, into the zone, to the master plan and those different things. They were not done in isolation and I, I appreciate that people are concerned and passionate about this stuff, but there really was a lot of people that went into discussing those things. Recently, they, it's, it's like there's this presumption that those things, just because they happened in the past, that they happened in a vacuum, that somebody just decided. And that's not the case. Everything that we do has been based on public input. I mean, that, that's what we've always done. And frankly, if we don't get more feedback, I mean, it may be, it may very well be that we don't get feedback because people figure it's not gonna make any difference. I also think that the vast majority of the people that come and speak to us, and the vast majority of people that I talk to, I mean, literally, this is not an exaggeration. I went to the door of one of my neighbors when I was getting signatures for my petition. And I said, do you have any concerns? And he said, Dexter is the greatest place in the world to live. Why would anybody complain? This is a fantastic place. I, I mean, a lot of people think this is a great place to live. They like it a lot. And that has been a sentiment for a long time. So, I mean, for a long time, the city and the village before that has been doing what a lot of people appreciate and have come to, to life, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Wa's not here, I guess, so. Bonnie, I wanted to leave you with the last comment. You've been with us for two years, right? Pretty special. Thanks for sticking it out.
Yeah, I don't know. I, am I your first student or are you just gonna call two years? I, I knew, um, Alex Gilbert, who was here before.
Yep.
I wanted to thank council for giving me the opportunity to serve in council for two years. I believe it's had a profound impact on my new government, especially my involvement in this community. Um, I've been here since, uh, I've been in this area and been in the school district since I was born. Um, but I've never felt so involved in my community as I have, well, serving this council. Um, it's one thing to live in a place where you know people or recognize cars. It's another thing to walk around the city and recognize things that you've talked about or, um, seen the creation and development of. And because of that, I think it's gonna be really difficult to leave. Um, I've learned a lot about what goes into building a community like you guys have and what it means to work in government and make these changes. And I know it's something that'll carry with me uh, into my time at university and, uh, into my profession.
Good luck in your future. Stay connected.
Thank you. And, uh, even though I am moving, I am gonna still be around. I've been to a lot of grad parties. And I am also giving a speech at this by Sunday office here, so.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any proposed agenda items? Okay, seek a motion for adjournment? Moved by Sam Pharaoh, second by Aldag, all in favor, second by saying hi?
Hi.
Have a great week and a great, uh, Memorial Day. I'll see you further.